Mr. Chairman, we're live.
Okay, welcome everybody in the audience and online. Today is Monday, June 26th. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. At this time, I please ask everyone rise and follow Rita in the pledge. Rita, would you mind reading this?
No problem. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Rita for doing that. Everybody get a chance to look at the agenda. If there's no additions or fractions, I entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll get right on down. Our next agenda item is an action item. These are the claims, board order claims, and I didn't see a junior college.
No junior college.
No junior college.
August.
There was one on there.
There was a...
It's a claim, yeah.
There was a $500 college thing?
Yeah, it was for spring tuition for Sampla.
We do need to approve that, correct?
That's a part of the claim.
It's in the board orders, yeah.
What you guys typically approve is just the applications that come in.
And those won't be until August, and we do have two of them waiting for that.
Got it.
Rita, Doug, I only had one question on Mickels for the Woody debris. Does that come out of Title III?
No, it comes out of solid waste.
That comes out of solid waste, and we budget so much for that?
Correct, and we also get reimbursed a portion of that from the local fire departments as well. Make a contribution.
Okay. What is the catastrophic care?
Indigent?
Care cost program?
It's the indigent program.
Is that what that is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think, I'm not 100%. Maybe Doug can explain this better than I am, but when we have indigent claims, part of that money pays the claim, and then anything over, the state pays. And then, as we get money back from those people, as they pay on that, part of that money goes back to the state and part of it comes to us. Is that correct? Kind of?
And we get, I know we had money coming in from the state towards the catastrophic stuff.
But we have to pay it back when that claim pays off that lien or that loan, then part of it comes to us and part of it goes back to the cat fund. Is that right, Doug?
No, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. So the, what you were seeing was, I think, what you're seeing was on the report, is that correct? On the total claims form?
Mm-hmm. Um...
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of them.
Yeah, Candace was doing some catch-up on it. She had reports and she had certain things that had to be completed for the state.
So that was some cleanup of the final, of our cat fund, what was in the trust to pay the cat fund. I guess to answer your question, when an individual has a lien and they're still owed payments to Valley County, we collect those payments and that money is received into the indigent fund.
So it doesn't go back to the state, it just goes back to us?
Correct.
So it doesn't go back to the cat fund?
No, the cat fund have... Bear with me one second.
Oh, that's in board orders.
Yeah, and I'm not seeing that in my board order file right here.
What report are you looking at, Mr. Chairman?
Um, the claims from, no, I can't open board orders. What the heck happened?
It's vendor number 3338, whatever that is.
Where did they go? Says it's in a PDF, but I can't open it.
Yeah, so that's, I see the board order that you're referring to, the catastrophic care cost program. So those were old claims that we had to resolve prior to the indigent program, change in the indigent program.
Yeah.
And the cat fund payments will show you each case that was still owed money to the cat fund.
So that's money from those claimants that have come in and then we ship it to the cat fund?
Correct.
Some worries in mind have disappeared. The heck? So Doug, do we have a revenue side then in indigent?
We do, we do.
And it's probably not very much.
Yeah, we project 15,000 that we collect.
And most of those claimants would have a lien, I'm assuming, on it. So has anybody ever come in and got their liens cleared?
Yeah, when they pay it off.
I know we used to do that here, but I think you guys are doing it in office now.
No, we still would bring that up for release. Once they're paid off, we haven't had one in a while that has fully paid it off. That would come through executive session.
And I see, while Mike LaCroix is here, we're doing about 3,000 a week for inmate meals. Mike, do we have, are we pretty full?
At about 52.
And most of those are states? That's the most I think I've seen in a long time per week. Any more questions for Rita?
I didn't have any this time. Amazing.
Chairman, I would move that we approve the claims, board order claims.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to pay the claims and board order claims. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Not my board order claim. That would be why I can't find it. I'm like, where is that?
You want to go down and get them?
I will have to bring them back. Sorry. Explains a lot. Suppose I can't find that claim.
You're having a Monday, on Mondays.
So did you guys get moved?
This is a process.
Yeah, I know those processes. This is the only one, just...
I have more, they're downstairs.
Thank you. Thanks Rita.
Okay, we're going to move right on down to our agenda. We're moving into an elected official report. First one up is Sue. Good morning.
Good morning. As of this morning, we have eight appeals that are going forward. I do believe the Girl Scouts have submitted documentation to request their exemption. That was the ownership issue. Oakley said he would accept an affidavit, and then they could do work on a quiet title throughout the year before they have to reapply next year. So that is one exempt appeal, and the rest of them are just regular property assessment appeals. We have two applicants for the DMV. HR is working on getting interviews set up hopefully this week. And Commissioner Mopin, when you read that post, when we fixed it regarding House Bill 292, was that more clear?
Yes, it was.
Did you have any more?
I didn't have any other questions.
Of calls or confusion? Okay, good. And I was able to submit the title fee increase that you guys approved in time, so it will go into effect for July 1. So today is the last day to appeal. They have until 5:00 PM. And so what happens between now and then will be what we will see for the rest of the week. Is there a particular day, if we don't need all three days this week, that you would prefer that I set them up for? Because I know there's a couple of them that are personal appearances. So if I know what day would work best for you guys, I could schedule those.
We were going to try and have some commissioner stuff on Wednesday, before BOE, and I'm hoping we can wind it all up on Wednesday.
So maybe schedule those for in the afternoon?
Um, I think there's what, three items on the agenda, Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
We have retirement parties, I think.
Is that on Wednesday?
Yeah.
At 4:00?
At 4:00.
Okay, so if I was to scheduling personal appearances, we would do probably between 2:00 and 4:00?
We have it scheduled, Sue, at 9:00 to begin.
9:00.
Right, but you guys have other issues?
We could come in earlier to do the commissioner stuff.
Yeah, 4:00 is for retirement, so.
Or we could start at 9:00 and do our commissioner stuff and then do BOE at 10:00. From 10:00 till probably 2:00 or 3:00.
Mr. Chairman, the notice says, the special notice that we sent said that Board of Equalization would start at 9:00. So what my plan was, is there's a few matters that we need to have another commissioner meeting. So we'll do, we'll put out a notice today for a special meeting for the commissioners beginning at 8:00 AM on Wednesday, the 28th. And then right after that, we would begin Board of Equalization. So I guess...
Okay, so I'm okay to schedule.
What I would propose is schedule them right at 9:00 AM.
Okay.
So if she lands, we're going to be done by 10:00 or 10:30?
Whenever.
Well, it depends, noon at the latest, I would guess.
Why don't we have our commissioner meeting then at 1:00? Because we're all going to have to be here until 4:00.
Okay, so if you, so if that's what the commissioners want to do, we won't have the, we'll just begin Board of Equalization at 9:00, and then I'll schedule a commissioner meeting to begin at 1:00. Okay?
That'll work. That work for you, Neil?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so we're on for Wednesday at 9:00.
Okay. I will schedule accordingly. Any other questions?
Good news. That's all I'd say is good news. It's a lot of stress right there. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Miller?
Commissioners, good morning. I'll be brief, because we do have an action item for McKenzie to present. So just to give you a brief overview of what is taking place in the clerk's office, we have begun a configuration for our new financial software. That will start today. Gabrielle, my chief deputy Gabrielle Knapp is working on that with Treasury Default. So they will be working on the configuration for our new financial software. We still are anticipating a go-live date of October. So that's exciting news, that we'll be able to transition to our new financial software within just a few months. So all is going well. This is a big, our next hurdle to overcome, and we will be participating as much as we can with the financial software company.
Is that Tyler?
That's correct. It's EDR Pro or ERP Pro 10 is the actual software that's going to be utilized.
When does the education start? When does the training start for the other employees? And I mean, how do we participate?
So we will give you timelines. We don't have those official timelines just yet, but there will be training that will be provided to all of internal staff and then users at a later date, and that will be scheduled here soon.
You think it'll be after October?
I do believe the user training will probably be around September for those individuals to be able, just to have the view-only portion of the software.
Some travel in September, so I just want to make sure I'm here.
Doug, when do you expect to have all your revenues in? Is it the 15th of July?
For projected revenues. So realistically, that is our goal, is to have projected revenues in July. Then we'll be able to project remaining cash the end of July. So really, the commissioner should have a clear understanding of what our budget is going to look like. I'm going to say the third week of July is what we would like to do for the commissioners to really see where we're at.
That's conference. You and I both be gone.
We'll be, what I'm, my hope is the 24th.
Which is when we're in Austin.
We won't be back, okay.
So around July 24th?
What we could potentially shoot for is the 17th. Is to have, the problem is, is I'd like to have that last claim period. So the last claim period in July is when we usually project remaining cash. But what we could try to do is push that to the 17th, or excuse me, the 14th. And then I'd like to have something not finalized, but a clear view for the commissioners to, a clear overview of the proposed budget, the 17th of July, for the commissioners to really see where we're at. If that date doesn't work, it's going to be the, that first Monday in August, or excuse me, we're not meeting...
We'll meet the 31st.
The 31st? So the 31st, we'll be, definitely be able to have some final figures to the commissioners to review. Our goal is to be able to publish the proposed budget by August 14th. That is when we would like to budget, excuse me, publish for our public hearing scheduled for August 28th. So our drop dead deadline, really to have everything finalized, is going to be the 14th of August. Is what we're working on.
Okay, I think that'll work. I'm just going to be busy end of the month, isn't it?
Yeah.
Hey?
Aren't they all anymore?
No, maybe it'll snow, go back to winter. So you have a next time, you want to do that next?
If I could just bring up one matter, Mr. Chairman. The sheriff brought to my attention that we did not get on the agenda, award to county sheriff or deputy county sheriff of his handgun and badge upon retirement. As everyone is aware, Sheriff Patty Bowlen is going to be retiring the end of the month. So what we will do is we will put this matter on as an action item for Wednesday at 1:00 PM with a couple other matters that were brought to our attention. So the code is Idaho Code 31830, and what it indicates is that, I'm just going to provide you an overview. A county sheriff who retires during or upon the completion of his term of office under the provisions of the Public Employment Retirement System of Idaho or the county's retirement system, whether under disability retirement or otherwise, may, with the consent of the Board of County Commissioners, be awarded his handgun sheriff's badge along with the identification card issued by the county sheriff's office. So I don't know if necessarily a motion needs to be made, but I think it might be wise just for that to be done. It does say consent. So we'll get this on as an action item for Wednesday of this week.
Doug, do we have to formally accept a resignation too?
You already have done that.
Have we done that?
Yeah, with the process that was conducted regarding...
I mean, we could say no.
I don't think, really, I don't think, I would refer to the prosecuting attorney's office, but I don't think the commissioners have to agree to it or not agree to it. It's a decision made by an elected official, and the process has already taken place, the next steps. And as the commissioners are aware, you will be conducting interviews tomorrow morning with the three recommended candidates by the Republican Central Committee, beginning at 9:00. And we will, that has been noticed, so you guys will be conducting those interviews tomorrow.
Doug, are they set times? Or we just start at 9:00 and we go?
I think we're just going to start at 9:00, and then the commissioners, you will be making the decision of who will be going first, second, and then third. I don't know if that has been coordinated with HR at all. I think just you guys can make that decision.
Normally, what we do is we draw numbers out of a hat. Who goes first, who goes second?
That sounds like...
And if HR could help with that. And then thanks to for the questions, by the way.
Commissioners, we do have an action item, so I will stand aside and allow Grant Rider McKenzie to present to the commissioners the grant application that's being considered.
Good morning, McKenzie, come on up.
Good morning. Okay, so I have a grant to submit for the safe streets and roads for all. It's for 25 million, and there's a $5 million match. It's for the S Bridge to reconstruct it and replace it.
Ooh.
Yeah. I'm going to be honest, it's kind of a stretch, because the safe streets and roads for all is for more highways that have a high fatality rate. But since there have been, you know, multiple crashes and whatnot on the bridge, I thought I'd take a leap of faith and go for it.
The only thing, and I'm sorry, McKenzie, I didn't get to read through all of the grant, but is the goal to leave the old bridge and build a new bridge next to it?
No, remove the bridge and replace it.
Because there's phone lines and sewer lines bolted on the bottom of that old bridge.
Yeah, that would have to be dealt with, and that's why there's the $30 million bid for that.
I just thought if you left the old bridge, maybe that would cut the price down.
And that was something that we had talked to Jeff about, so. I think they should leave the old bridge too. I think it's a historical fishing bridge.
Would you like me to talk to him before I submit this and see if we can submit for a lower?
I don't remember it specifically calling out.
What I read is they, what I didn't read is, they didn't show a view of what they're proposing or anything.
We don't have that, yes.
So they don't even have any, so...
It's still honestly in the works.
It's kind of odd that they would ask for X amount and not even have a...
Have it engineered or anything.
Anything, you know, a view of what they want to do.
I know, and you're right, that's why it's kind of a leap. But that's why I did submit a grant earlier on this year for about 1.5 million to actually do the planning of it. And the, you know, get all the engineered...
How did that, how did that grant, did it go through?
We still haven't heard back. I think that's October. Kind of a slow process.
Okay.
Well, I think with these federal grants, it's like, you know, you got to take a leap of faith.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I don't know how much luck you can have if you don't even have it engineered yet. That's my issue, is we're just burning candles here trying to do something that we don't even have a plan for.
I know, I just, it was such a good grant, it was such a high, you know, 25 million would be huge, so I thought, go for it.
Is this an annual, annual grant, comes around every year?
I'm not sure, actually. I think it might be a new one.
I think this is part of that infrastructure bill that just passed, so.
Oh, great, the total cost.
There wasn't no parameters with it. Just, hey, I'd like some of that money.
The parameters were, you know, it was... It was to create safer streets. So they essentially wanted, you know, roads and highways that had high fatality rates. But there was, it was kind of open ended with that. So I, you know, I looked up the information on how many crashes and there were, and there was like 11, so I thought maybe... You know, it like, it's a leap, honestly, but it's a great grant, so I thought we'd go for it.
Yeah, give it a shot, I guess.
Well, I think it's better to try and fail than not try at all, I'm wondering.
Yeah, that was my thinking.
So you guys are good with this?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the safe streets and roads for all grant for the S Bridge.
Second.
Moved in second, in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Good job, good grant.
Awesome, thank you so much, Mr.
Bring you flowers if you pull this one off.
And Zerone chocolates.
Chocolate? I got chocolate.
Hey, we're going to move on down the list. Brian Nogel, Mr. Nogel. Good to see you.
Nice to see you all. Good morning. Not a whole lot to report from the prosecutor's office. We are actually kind of in the thick of a software case management system upgrade as well. We're going to have a, this week, we'll have a mock go-live. And then end of July, very end of July is when we have our official go-live, where we'll start that case management system that should start moving us towards a more paperless system and not using paper files anymore, which gives me the shakes a little bit. But I'm hoping that over, slowly but surely, over the next year, we'll be able to transition from paper to a digital format.
Do you have enough broadband to do it?
Uh, I don't know. It's going to be close. We've got Jeremy on board with that. We have talked to him about it. I think we're going to have the capability to do it. I think the hard part is going to be just the initial implementation. Because they're, you know, the team that implements this software program is going to show up, like three or four of them are going to be here with us for that first week, that last week in July when we actually go live. And they're all going to be set up with laptops in our conference room. And, you know, that may be the most stress we put on the system. And then, of course, you know, we're going to have the issues of digital storage, and, you know, there's just massive amounts of like on-body video and everything that we have to store within that system. And I think we've got the capability to do it. CarpeL is really pushing the idea that they are improving their storage capabilities for those sorts of things, so that we can keep all of the evidence in our cases within that, that software program.
And that was approved in the budget last year?
Yeah. And so, you know, we've, obviously, I think there's going to be some sort of planning on the fly and adjusting on the fly, but for the most part, yeah, I mean, for the first year, it's all going to be kind of a, we're going to maintain the systems we have and implement this new one as we go. So it's not like, you know, we're going to have some redundancies in place, we aren't going to lose anything. But, you know, over time, slowly, we'll kind of completely implement CarpeL, and I think we're going to be fine. I mean, this, this particular software system is one that is used by most of the small counties in the state. And I think it's, it's one that has proven to be pretty, pretty effective for the small counties. Latah County uses it, Blaine County just started using it. And from what we've heard from prosecutors in those other counties, everybody's happy with it. We're able, with those other small counties, we can share information within the system. So that's helpful as well. So it's, I think it'll be a good move for us. But as, as always, when you, when you change, you know, a case management system or say a financial system like the clerk's office is doing it, you know, you can't really expect that it's going to be a nice, clean, smooth road. But, but we'll get over the bumps and it'll be fine.
So Brian, you're going to have a hidden case of these legal pads on your desk?
Like a, like a, I don't know, like in the old days, either something for comfort down there. It used to be, it used to be a bottle of whiskey or a...
An extra briefcase.
Or an extra briefcase, now it's, now it's some...
So if I'm looking for comfort, I just need to come down to your office?
I'll have a fresh legal pad ready for you.
A little southern comfort.
Doug, did you get new desktops? Have you gotten your new desktop yet from Jeremy?
I don't think so. My desktop's fine. I think we got, we got new desktops either the year I got here or the year after. So within the last two years, I think we've got new desktops. So, and we, we now have, we switched to laptops with a docking station. We wanted to do that so that we would be able to just plug our laptop in there. And then, when we go to the new case management system, we just take the laptop, we go to court.
You have it all on your laptop?
Yeah, and then we just dock it back in. So that's where we're at now. We got to get our laptops to the point where we can, you know, seamlessly connect to the web here and at our docks, but I think we should be able to do that. Talking to Jeremy. Oak's been real busy with the, with the Board of Equalization stuff and the tax appeals, so he's up to his eyeballs in that, has been for, for some time. I don't really have much of an update on the Planned Parenthood lawsuit. That is, there is a pending motion to dismiss the counties from the case at this point. And I think the judge has taken a pretty serious look at that. That's been pending for a while. So as soon as I have an update on that, I'll certainly let you know. We don't have any criminal trials scheduled this month. I think the city might have one scheduled. I don't know if that's still going. We are likely to have a felony jury trial next month, or in two months in August. We've got one that's, that's likely to go that month. So not a super busy trial docket this summer, but definitely, I think we'll, our office will have one then. I think that's about it. Like to congratulate Patty on a pretty incredible career, just, just barely making her rule of 80. Forty-year careers in, in law enforcement are pretty rare. So that's certainly something to be, to be proud of. And I certainly consider it an honor to have been able to work with her these last few years of her career. So a little shout-out to Patty.
Awesome.
Any questions for me?
Oop, sounds like you're on top of it, though.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. Speaking of sheriff, you're next.
We need to take a photo or something, you know, your last presentation.
Are you this tall? Oh, I was good until you started talking. Yeah, last week. So not a whole lot to report. Yeah, last week. Um, so not a whole lot to, to report. Um, do have a detention officer who will be starting his, um, detention academy on July tenth. We had one resignation, resignation from the jail, newer employee, and we knew, um, he was looking for, closer to home, I guess, for him. And then, uh, but we have one that has accepted a position just right after that, so, evened it out.
Good, good.
But the jail has been really, I mean, these guys are stretched to the limit because, um, eight certified, eight uncertified, basically, so you can't work by yourself if you're not.
Wow.
Yeah.
Um, question. When you said detention, is these the guys that are working in the jail, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's what the detention officers are.
Yes.
Okay.
Adult detention.
Yeah.
It's not like detention when you were in school, Neil.
We used to call them jailers, you know, I mean, I did some of that, but, uh, these days, they're detention officers. Certified and that's their, uh, their titles. They also help out with the, with the security at the front door and in, uh, the courtroom.
Okay.
So are you full then in detention or now that? How many are, are you short still?
Uh, we're still about two.
Two? Okay.
Swap one in, swap one out.
And, and we did have one resignation from, um, uh, dispatch, so, we're down to seven.
Oh, that's still better than three?
That, that is, yes.
Today's hiring world from the police, that's pretty darn good.
Well, we hadn't had, I mean, we've been running on five and six at the most, um, and we were had been, yes, down to three and and it goes through cycles like that. I think this is the, was the third time in my career that we were down that low, and it was. So, anyway.
Can't think of any other questions.
Huh? I bet you're excited.
Well, I am, but I have so much going on that.
Sheriff, will you be able to be here at, uh, one o'clock on Wednesday?
Yes.
Good. Good, okay, no more questions. Have a great day.
A great week.
Yeah.
You can always leave it for somebody else. It's fine. You can leave it for somebody else.
I don't wanna leave them all confused yet, so.
We're all confused. Hey, the next one is Johanna. Morning.
Good morning, commissioners, and I will say it's been an honor. It's been a short time working with you, Patty, but it has been an honor. Um, the treasurer's office just finished up the tax drive, so we're still collecting payment. The mail is still coming in, and we're still processing credit cards from that. I'll have a good report on the tax collected in the month of June at our next regularly scheduled meeting. Um, I'm also busy working on this configuration of the new software. Should be in meetings most of the week, getting that finalized and then getting ready for the trainings, like Doug said. Um, in the process of this configuration, it has helped me better understand some of the ways that we report cash and, and how we, you know, balance that statement of cash quarterly with you and the commissioners, um, or with you and the clerk's office, excuse me, and, um, part of the process has helped me realize that I would like to open up another LGIP account, and this one would be strictly for tax dollars, so prior to having our own separate account, anytime I would invest tax dollars collected, it was important that I moved them back before the month end, otherwise we would have issues balancing our statement of cash. While I've recognized that I can open up a new account that is outside of the reported pooled funds, still within the reported, uh, treasurer's accounts and reconciled monthly, but this would allow me to leave tax dollars invested up until the last minute, and right now, with interest rates so high, keeping a couple million dollars in a bank account for one day extra can bring in thousands of dollars, so, um, it, I have it as an action item, and, um, I'm requesting your permission to open up a third account with the LGIP. This is the state investment pool. Um, right now, our interest rates last month were mid for four and a half percent. Um, we haven't gotten our June statements yet, and we won't until, uh, mid-July, but, um, I have the tax dollars invested in our regular treasurer's account, and I'll have to pull them back out before the end of the month, so we can balance our statement of cash, but if we're able to open up this account, I would be able to keep them in there until the day before we finish tax turnover, which would allow us probably ten extra days.
So the other two you have, is it with the same bank?
Uh, so it's not a bank, it's actually with the Idaho State Comptroller's Office, and they have a li- uh, local government investment pool.
Okay.
And, um, a lot of the counties send their tax dollars to those accounts because it, uh, gives you twenty-four hour turnaround on liquidity. So if I send the money there and I need it back tomorrow, I can request it today and we'll have it.
But this one you're doing now is for Idaho First in McCall, correct?
No, this is for, uh, the LGIP through the state, um, state pool.
So, so when you bring them back, how do you have to account it when you bring it back?
Uh, we just record it as a, a transfer in the accounting system. Um, and then we get our monthly interest statement from the money that's left in those accounts. So this account will clear out each month when we bring the tax dollars back. It'll go back down to zero.
Oh, I see.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, Johanna, just want to straighten my own little brain here. It says designated bank name Idaho First. That's just where we have our accounts.
That is where we're gonna be transferring the money out of. Yes, that's correct. So we have a tax collector account at Idaho First Bank. This account, once we create it, will only collect money from and send money to this designated bank at Idaho First Bank.
Gotcha.
And the reason I'm, um, coming to you to ask permission is because there is a Board of Governing Directors over our local government investment pool, and it's you three, so I need your permission to be able to set it up.
Um, I think this is reasonable. Ask, you, this is thirty, usually thirty days or less money you can get back and forth, like you said. Whereas in a CD or a three-month or six-month, you're kinda tied to that, so this gives you a lot more freedom, so. I'll make the motion that we open up a local government investment program for tax dollars.
I'll second. I'm very familiar with this, and it's a great tool, and it's, uh, secured, so.
Hey, we got a motion second in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye, motion carries. Yeah, I just got five point four percent on a CD.
Look like you tried to kill yourself. If you popped her, hell, it would've put me in a grave. I saw what you were doing.
What did he say?
He's still putting these in, um, bonds, or how are they investing the LGIP?
He did record it before, and I haven't been through the news since the record of last year, so.
Okay.
There you go. Anything else? Nothing else? Any more questions for Johanna?
See you at eleven-thirty.
Hey. We're gonna move on down to department heads. First one up is the net. Good morning.
Good morning. Um, it's summer. Uh, very busy on inspections. We're twenty-two permits above what we were last year at this time.
So what are we roughly, you know?
We're at two hundred and one.
Well, it's a good thing we brought some more help on.
Since this, since January one?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, my goodness.
Yep. Yeah, Gordon's helping out a lot. He's just kinda working among everybody and helping.
Is he still part-time?
No.
He's full now? Hey?
Yep. Uh, we got our new printer, but it only worked for three jobs. We only got one scan in and two sets of plans. So they got somebody coming up to look at it. So we got a couple mad customers, because we told them we could print them off. So anyway, if they, oh, yeah, that's what's going on.
But he's coming up today?
Today or tomorrow.
Okay.
These, this printer you're getting, it prints on a, prints off a full s- size set of prints.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Eighteen by twenty-four and twenty-four by thirty-six.
It's just not up to speed.
Senna and I are gonna go back to Stibnight within the next couple weeks. We're gonna do an inventory just to see what they got. If they have permitted what they don't. At Yellow Pine, hit, maybe Big Creek too.
Are you guys gonna look at Wormwood Lake as well, or do you have that pretty well nailed?
We're doing pretty good with that, but we'll probably hit that pretty soon.
On trip?
Yeah, it'll be good. Hey, Tripp, it'll be fun. That's about all I got for you.
Got my, got my building permit yet?
I think it's in my pile for today.
So two hundred and one permits, so would you stay?
She was messing with me.
I know that housing was a portion of that, very large houses, but are people, what are you seeing as far as, um, locals? Are we getting more permits for, like, trying to convert sheds or for, um, you know, any kind of local housing at all?
We're doing a lot of houses. I mean, it's, it's a varied.
But just big ones, yeah.
Pretty big ones. There's a few tiny homes, you know, some of them being built.
What's a tiny home? Three thousand square feet?
Yeah, probably under four. But no, that's, it's a lot of houses. There are a lot of big ones. There's not, okay, a lot of local ones, but. Darn.
All right, no more questions. Thank you. Have a great day. Uh, Skip. Good morning.
Um, so, I guess first question really, if, when we change out to our new system um, for the Tyler technology, is that gonna be changing our thumb and thing? Do you guys know that?
I don't know. You're gonna have to talk to Jeremy unless, these guys know. I have no idea.
All right.
The time, the way that in, uh, employees clock in will, will change as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, so DeeDee's gone this week. She's providing training for IDJC and a few other agencies. Um, St. Anthony's, Pocatello area, there, so I'll be covering for her stuff. Steve's office been moved, um, working with IT to enhance customer services. We don't have anybody up there at the front. I've got ahold of Mackenzie to ask her about buying some signage. Something that looks good and professional, and just kinda cleaning that area up. And, um, also working with the building department to kind of work out the other safety protocols that we decided on, couple locked doors and fairly simple stuff.
So you're working with Scott on that?
Oh, yeah, I, I informed him before, then he left on vacation, so I just sent another email last week just to follow.
You're just getting started.
Yeah.
If you don't have anybody out front, do you have what, like a bell to push? Do you have a camera out there that you can see from the back?
So what we have is, we've always had a bell you can push. But what we're putting up there is one of our phones, but it's not gonna have the receiver part because of germs, and also we don't want people trying to make calls, so it'll just have on there our extension. So if they're coming in to see me, we'll have signage there, and they'll know to push that button if I don't answer, and to push the bell. So I'm gonna get them.
Oh, interesting, okay.
Um, no kids in detention?
No kids in detention.
No, still have one committed, but that's the state. And, uh, Melissa's done a great job with Bee Garden that I was very much ready to get rid of. And, um, it's, it's worked out really good. They did it basically overnight. I was really impressed. And we had kids show up while I was waiting for Sue to get there, and Melissa was there, and I just asked her, and she put into work, like, Bee Garden. We're doing that, so it's working out really well. Outside of that, I made a few other requests, um, McCall PD based on the safety protocols. One was a camera, to get access to their outside cameras. And, uh, I didn't, I haven't heard back from the chief yet, but it was kinda told probably not because that, that means network connection. And, um, so I'm, I'm thinking about making a request, talking to at least IT about getting cameras, and the idea is just, we don't have any on our side where the employee entrance is. There's one across the road at the Department of Lands, whatever, built fishing game building. You, you can see, but it's so far away, it's hard.
Mm-hmm.
And the idea is like, if we're working alone or after hours, just get on there and just take a peek to see if there's anybody out around cars and stuff, if something's going on or there's a danger, or something happens, we'd have a recording.
Blink cameras are cheap.
Yeah, I just, it seems like it, but, you know, I don't know about.
You gotta run that stuff through IT, though.
Network, so I'm gonna, I'm waiting for McCall PD, and then I'll.
Yeah.
And on what they say, then I'll talk to you.
Do they, they have cameras around the building or not?
They have cameras for the front of the building and their side of the building where the food bank is, but they didn't install anything on our side.
I'm wondering, Skip, if we could hook into their network with our cameras, at least someone is, but then you wouldn't be able to see it, would you?
Well, and that's my request to him, is, is there some way we can get access to your cameras?
Yeah.
And I just, I don't know. I was told that it's probably a no because it's on their network, and this would be on our network, and.
Oh, cause they don't mix, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which I understand, but it didn't hurt to ask. Outside of that, we're busy. Um, I did send other administrators and probation and pre-trial across the state, and them know that we're not gonna be doing courtesy UAs unless they're a Valley County resident. So there's just no place up here at UA. It's a problem. Except for the hospital, and that's getting in, you know, when they have to, and it's expensive. But it's just gotten overwhelming for my staff. And we're already doing around a hundred and twenty-eight for our stuff, and then you have people up here that are on pre-trial or probation for a week on vacation, or coming up to work on a project for a while. And just, it's become too much, so I have said if they're a Valley County resident, and it's a house, and they have a case somewhere else, we'll do it, cause I feel responsible, cause they're one of our residents. But outside of that, I've just told them.
Can we, can we build back that cost if somebody requests it?
It isn't the cost, it's the time. It's cause me and my staff are the ones that do the UAs.
Oh.
However, if the cost is high enough, you can buy, or you can hire somebody to do just that work.
Well, um, so we, we made a resolution based on the rules. We can't make a profit, and it costs us nine dollars and fifty cents per UA for the ones that we send to lab. We also get instant ones um, that we can use, and then if it's negative and they interview right, we're good. If it's positive, then we still have to send it. But it's ten dollars, and then what we charge is fifteen, based on a resolution of time and cost, so it's a, it's a maybe.
Per month?
It's per UA.
Per test.
And how often do they have to have?
Well, it just depends.
Kinda random, isn't it?
It depends on what they're on. Like, there are some people that, if they're an opiate addict or methamphetamine addict, that stays in your system three to five days. You know, same with alcohol. That's how they're primarily tested, so they might test two times a week. Definitely once a week.
What's the lab charge?
What's that?
What's the lab charge, you guys?
Nine dollars and fifty cents.
Well, that's all they charge?
Yeah, but there's a, we have a part of that too, is we don't, we don't get paid for a lot of UAs. I mean, if they're on probation with us, if they're on pre-trial, we're gonna UA them whether they can afford it or not, so we end up due swallowing some cost. And, um, I haven't looked at it for a little bit. We've done a pretty good job, but we're still I think spending more money on it than what we're getting by a thousand or two a year.
Yeah, I'm concerned about your policies, though, that you don't have enough time to do it. Is most of this stuff happening in the evenings or middle of the night, or is it during the day?
No, it's our, it's during the day. I mean, so it's during our business hours, but when you have all the people that we're doing in interviews, and then you have another eight people come in, and then sometimes they're not set up in the system, and you gotta do that, and then you gotta find out who their POs, and they didn't bring in that information, they can get timely really quick, or they get stage fright, and you're waiting for fifteen or twenty minutes to get that done. It's just, it's, it's a lot of work, and we've been doing it, but we looked at the numbers, we looked at the time, listened to my staff, and.
Me, it seems like a pretty reasonable request that you have to do those. Especially if it's a meth or a, a substance abuse issue, you would wanna do that.
They're out-of-county people that are just up here.
So they just come in and say, hey, would you mind doing a UA on me?
Well, usually somebody calls, hopefully, somebody calls or emails and say, hey, I have somebody up there for the next two weeks. Can you do it? But not always. Um, sometimes people just say, hey, there's a place that you can UA up there, and they show up. So these are out-of-county cases, out-of-county people that are just up here.
So do we ask other counties to do ours if our people are down in their counties?
No, I mean, I can't think of any other.
That would be my only concern, is that, and we're not gonna do yours.
Ada County? Ada County, Annie County, Hootney County, Aitaw County. None of them do it. They all have services. They live in a big enough place. They send them to UA providers.
Those people that come up here, get, get permission from the parole officer, come up here on vacation for a week or so.
Yeah.
And then their patrol officer calls, hey, I need you guys to do, yeah, I agree.
I got this, I got this up here for this amount of time.
Not your problem.
I think we need, we need a board somewhere that says, this is the type of business we need. This is a business opportunity.
Well, the only other option, I'm guessing, would, they would have to drive back to their county, do the UA and then come back.
Well, there's other testing options. I mean, for instance, we have patches. We can put a patch on somebody that stays on there for a week. You know, and it tests for everything but alcohol. Alcohol, there's handheld breath units, there's scram units, they can hook them up with, so.
Or they could go to the hospital and get a UA at the hospital. It's just more money.
It's considerably more money, like a hundred dollars. It's, but, um, we have people that go out of county that we work through with it. And if we're not confident, like if it's a pretty serious addiction they still don't have a hand on, sometimes we have to say no. No, we don't wanna stop them from doing anything good or healthy, but if we have that concern, we can't find a place for them to test. And then what our equipment has doesn't work, which, um, it does ninety percent of the time. So like I said, patches cover all the drugs and then we have the two things for alcohol, so.
Whether you take the patch off and mail it in?
No, they, they can't touch it. So we put it on as secure barrier around it. If they bring it in and they've flaked with it, they've messed with it at all, that's an automatic violation of that program. So they come in, then we take it off and we send it to the lab. For about ten days.
So these other counties could be doing that too?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I agree. We, good point. We don't take their other people. It's just more expensive.
It's convenient for them and we're happy to do it when we have the capacity. And when summer's done, probably go back to it, you know, they'll probably be fine, but right now there's just too many. We're not trying to be bad neighbors and nobody's had hard feelings over it. They understand.
I'm wondering if the people that do the medical in the jail wouldn't add that as a service. I already have a nurse here. I mean, you know, it might be something to talk to Sheriff's Office about just to see.
Well, and they do, they, they have capacity stuff too. So we have people that are up here in Cascade, they have UAs, and if they really can't make it and we're worried about it, we'll call the jail. We'll say, hey, can this person come over and do UA? And if they can do it, they do it for us. Jail staff does. And so I haven't gotten any further in the idea of that, but they partner with us when we need that service for some people.
If they don't do the UA, are they in violation then of their probation?
Yeah, technical violation.
So they're kinda stuck if we don't do it.
Well, but it just comes down to they need to know that going out, right? They should know wherever they're going, if they're gonna be able to test it or not. And the PO or the pretrial person should know that, plan accordingly.
Exactly, so it's not, it's not on you, it's on them.
Right.
Yep.
Boom.
No, but you want people to be successful and not get their probation violated because they couldn't find someplace to get a UA. That doesn't seem fair either.
Especially if they're up here working.
Especially out there trying to work or do a job. How many are we talking about, Skip? Is there, I mean, a hundred a week or ten a week or?
No. Um, actually, we didn't do it in, we did it in weeks, but it really came out to a month. And it was right around forty-five.
So about two a day, maybe one and a half a day.
Well, we're open, we're open five days, five days a week.
Even two a day. I don't think it's that big of an ask personally, but I don't know.
Well, if, if it was all spread out and it was two a day, it wouldn't be, but it's not. It's like seven in one day and another, and then five in a day or, you know? And I, I didn't do this lightly. I talked to my staff. We teamed up about it. We looked at the numbers. We looked at the, the time it's taking. It's just, it's not gonna get any slower. I don't think it's gonna stay steady. It's gonna, it's continued to increase through the summer. So like I said, I appreciate what you're saying and I think it is cruel to have a violation on somebody that can't accomplish what they're supposed to. But it's also, like I said, it's a planning thing. We do it all the time. We manage it and I think it's reasonable that other counties and other people do.
You'd like notify the counties, these other counties, that you're not gonna do this anymore, that they're gonna have to send their, their folks on probation up with a patch if they want a UA during the week?
I just, I just said that we're not doing any more UAs for out of county cases unless they're a resident of Valley County. Now, if somebody's gonna be up here working for six months or something like that, I'll look at that. But you're up here for a week on vacation.
Well, and they still have the opportunity to go to a hospital and pay more money to get it done. So it's not like nothing is available. They have a way to get it done if they need to.
Right. If it's an emergency, I, I have a working relationship with these people. You know, I'll bend if it's an emergency. I just don't want them to make that their standard and their go-to, which they have.
Yeah, which I can understand.
And that's, like I said, normally it's fine, but it's turned into it's not fine. It's got overwhelmed.
Well, let's try and see how it goes, but I feel like, you know, we gotta give these guys or these people the best chance possible to be successful on probation and if we're not.
I know, I agree with that. I just think that if they plan ahead and their PO does their job, it's manageable for eighty-five percent.
Yeah, cause I feel like part of that is now that they're making their problem yours. And I'm kinda big on, you know, be responsible, take care of your own stuff. Don't make it your problem when it is there, cause like you're saying on that planning part, the parole officer and them, they have to be all planned out. This is the days I'm taking off. What do I, you need me to do? They know. They know.
And I'm assuming this happens probably all over the country with people that travel somewhere for months at a time. They've gotta find another probation officer that'll take on their cases. Is that kinda how it works?
Well, it's not a probation, not, what I'm talking about specifically for this is just they're on that caseload. They're not transformed, we're not supervised and all they're doing is coming in, we're doing a UA for that agency. That's it. And like I said, other agencies, I'd say a good portion of them, they don't do their own UAs because they live in a population where there's UA services. They, they found out to them.
It's a problem. We just don't have a UA service up here anymore.
That's right.
We used to have one.
We did, but that's just it. We had to have so many people come up here, but it's a small community. But if you went to Wasey County or a lot of other small counties like us, there's just no UA place there.
Yep, get it.
We went down a hole on this one. What else you got going on?
No, that was, that was my final thing. I didn't need to stretch this out.
I don't think we went down a hole. I think it's something that appreciate you talking to us about. I guess we could try it and see how it works, but I just don't want people to get failed because they couldn't get a UA. I mean, it's not that difficult, not that expensive and not that hard, especially if you're only averaging two a day. I guess I'm missing it, but.
Yeah, it's, if it was just, if it was that simple, I wouldn't be worried about it. And really a technical violation, put it in our book. Let's say I told somebody they can go, we did our best planning, but it can't work out. I'm not gonna violate them for that. I miss one UA in a week and say, as soon as you get back, you have to test. And so they can work with them. They don't have to PV them. Most of the time they don't get a PV on missing a UA unless it's repetitive, it's a habit, active avoidance kinda stuff.
Well, another way to do this is to charge them a lot more money if they're not part of your program. So that, that will discourage them from sending people up here, hey, it's gonna cost you a hundred bucks.
Just don't know how to do that.
I don't know how to do it either, because you only have cost plus, what is it, five percent or something? Yeah.
And they, I think they would know with their old person that, yeah, I'm going to Valley County for a long weekend. They don't have this service up there and work it out with their.
And, and it's not the first time either. During COVID, we quit doing it too. That was over like a year, so.
So where did they go then?
They worked it out with them before they left.
That's, that's what it's about.
Or if they're gonna be.
Maybe, maybe Sherry oughta retire and open up a UA business.
Or, or if they're gonna be up here a long time.
That's right in my line of skill sets.
They can transfer their case to us. If we're supervising, if they transfer the case to us, then.
Then you have to.
And we would automatically.
Yeah, yeah.
We're supervising the case.
Okay, well, let's just see how it works and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa. Good morning.
So I just have a few updates and then there's a whole bunch of stuff going on with the 4H program. So the newsletter for summer programs went out via email. And I'm excited about having a water bath canning demo and workshop. So I'll be doing a demo up in McCall and a full three hour workshop in Cascade. And that's nice because people have been requesting food preservation pretty consistently since I've been in the office. And so it'll be nice to have that, that workshop and hopefully it's well attended. Continuing the adult youth programming out of the community garden in McCall. And I'll be gone for the next two weeks on annual leave and then the next week for the Community Development Society. And I'll be presenting on the Cascade Arts Walk at that conference.
So when will you be back?
July twenty-third. So significant chunk of time I will be MIA, but some personal, some work. The 4H County Oral Presentations were June fifteenth and sixteenth. And that's with the 4H program, when they do a project, they have a chance to do oral presentations and then they do record books too. And so all that stuff is really good for professional development as an individual, for job applications, for public speaking. If you ever have some extra time and you wanna volunteer to be one of the judges, it's a really cool way to get to know the 4H program. Uh, there's four STEM outdoor classroom classes that happened at Kelly's and that was a countywide program. There was art classes at Kelly's and fifty youth attended. Uh, this past weekend, we had people kind of seated out all over the county. There was the McCall fly-in drone presentation at the McCall airport. And I also had, um, Master Gardeners tabling, uh, at the Kaleidoscope Festival in McCall and the Alpha Days down in Cascade. And the Master Gardener tabling is just like a public outreach for our office as well as this is the types of programs we have. And in McCall, the, the Master Gardener was partnering with, um, the McCall Library, the McCall Chamber and the Creative District effort. So it was like two people tag taping a bunch of community stuff to be present at that event, so I felt good to plug, uh, Master Gardener into that. The Donnelly 4H Petting Zoo Program, um, that was the seventy youth reached, it's super popular. And that was County Corral 4H Club hosting the event. Six youth went to do community service and weed whacking and sweeping out the buildings at the fairgrounds. And then the programs coming up in 4H is the Young Riders 4H Club is going to a field trip to CS Meat Packing Plant. And they've been doing their community service at the food bank in Cascade. Uh, Horse Clinic is coming up and it will be at the fairgrounds, the arena, June twenty-eighth. Large Livestock Field Day and Home Visits to help support the youth and facilities. And then Katie with, uh, her 4H part-time, she's been doing the McCall, Donnelly Cascade Music Camp and Farm Visits. And then Aleah, uh, is doing Summer 4H AmeriCorps and she's helping with camps and livestock education days. And then Allison has been conducting a lot of trainings with that team of the 4H assistant, as well as the AmeriCorps person. And finishing the Fair Book with Jill and the Fair Book will be out this week. Title is Mountains High, Valley Low. We all love our Idaho. And, um, they're opening 4H online fair entry program today. So lots of stuff going on in 4H and I, I'll have Allison or I'll ask her if she's available to come in to do the reporting while I'm gone. And then you'll be able to ask her specific questions.
So Aleah is the new V-Corp person?
Yeah, so for the summer, uh, Aleah Bunker, once Aleah Stahl, um, is gonna be in our office for the next, until probably, I don't know her exact end date, but it'll be shortly after fair.
Right after fair, okay.
That they're done, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. I'll be short and sweet today.
Aleah Stahl, you're talking about Butch and Shelley's daughter?
Aleah Bunker is her name right now.
Her name's Bunker, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But she was a 4H participant, longtime participant. And so same with Katie Gray, which is now Katie. Blinking out her name, her last nick, her, her new last name, but, um, they're both for, longtime 4H Valley County participants.
Yeah, I know. Her and, know her family, so.
Yeah.
Big girl.
Hmm, good.
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll see you back in July sometime.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Mike. A lot of open positions right now, as you're aware of. And for a number of those open positions, we are recruiting for multiple candidates for them, such as patrol deputy, detention deputy, obviously road technician. We've got multiples in those, uh, things. We are also looking for nine-one-one dispatch, DMV clerk, um, inventory management specialist. That's the clerical, the new clerical position in the road department. Weed control specialist, GIS analyst. Um, the good news is we do have, we have conducted and completed interviews for the P and Z technician for send this position over there. And park clerk, we, um, interviewed last week for those, excuse me, those two positions. And we are going to be extending some job offers that way, hopefully before the end of the day today. And oh yeah, we're interviewing for sheriff.
Oh, I'm glad you're doing it.
Yeah, right? We being you up there. And, uh, speaking of that, along with, uh, Sheriff Boland, this being her last week, it is also, of course, Ms. Duncan's last week as well, so anyway.
Maybe, maybe.
Maybe, well, she's got, I've got her phone number, so press me.
I do too.
She's not getting far. So all told, obviously the numbers kinda changing. Mike already came walking in and dropped a resignation letter on me. So the number's always somewhat in flux, but we're looking at about eighteen open positions right now across the county. So, uh, but the good news is we are getting applications in. Um, and we are getting, uh, I mean, I haven't been here a long time, but I'm already seeing applications from people from out of town, out of state that are saying, I am relocating to Cascade. I do have an opportunity up there. And I quite honestly think that's going to be happening more and more over the coming years is you're getting this big influx and I'm, I probably told you this before, you're getting this big influx of people coming into Idaho because they wanna get away from wherever they're from and they're moving right into the Treasure Valley down there and they're like, I just left this. Where's the next place to go? Or, um, as we all know, we drive down to the Treasure Valley and the last thing we wanna do is stay down there very long. So you're getting lifelong Idahoans that are also looking for, where can I get away from that and where can I go to? Everybody knows it up here and you go to the website, you see that we're hiring as many positions as we are. That's gonna encourage people. And so yes, the housing market is always gonna be a challenge, but I think we're also gonna see an adjustment there hopefully in the next few years. Couple of other things real quick. Uh, we've got a service award that we're gonna be giving out here in a couple of hours. I'll be helping out with that, but also we have one at, uh, for an employee up at the landfill. And wanted to discuss with you how best you thought we could go about doing that. Um, I mean, I could go get a truckload of stuff to take to the landfill on a Saturday and drive everybody up there if you wanted. Uh, but otherwise, if you wanted, I don't know if we wanna do, you know, if somebody wants to make a little drive up.
Um, Michael, you and I work on a time we could both go up there together.
Sounds good.
Sometime this week.
Be happy to do it.
Tomorrow is interviews and something else. Wednesday, probably maybe Wednesday afternoon or Thursday.
You betcha.
Okay, and then we'll just shoot up there and get a picture and that'd be great.
Perfect.
Works for me.
Perfect. Last thing I've got on my, uh, notes here, just to bring up with you is, um, Mr. Miller gave, forwarded an email on to me a couple of weeks back from somebody with the Central District Health Department who, and they put on, uh, training for overdose prevention, overdose assistance. This is not a high level training. Obviously, we've got the folks with the Sheriff's Office who do extensive training for their staff. This is more like an hour, hour and a half kind of training that they put on. Uh, they put them on at various locations throughout the year. It's of course a free of charge training, but they've offered to come to us and put one on here to tailor one for us, for our staff if we wanted. Um, I'm kinda noodling it around right. I'm kind of noodling it around right now. I think if we were to do something like that, we'd want to do it totally on a volunteer, if you want to attend it kind of a basis. We know that there are always going to be people working for us in a workforce who are maybe in their personal life, maybe in their outside life, come into contact with people who might be at risk in this kind of a field and might be interested in some sort of a training. And of course, we've got forward-facing people here in the county. But I'm thinking more of a service that we can provide to our employees if they would like to attend a training like this. So I just wanted to throw it out to you to think about it.
Might want to do a real quick employee survey to see if they're interested. I guess the thing that's rattling in my little brain is the fact that to me, this would be good training for kids, 4H level kids. Maybe that age group as well, you might want to talk to Allison or Melissa on, maybe we could take an hour of their, one of their days and do this as well. I'm pretty sure the Sheriff's Department and Jill have had a lot of that already. So I don't want to be redundant, but I still think it's something to, just do a survey and find out.
Sounds good.
And see where it goes personally.
Anyway, that's all I had for the week.
Good, good.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Hey, let us know, thank you, and we'll work on that service award. There's Jeremy, you snuck in. Good morning.
Good morning, nice to meet you, how you doing?
Good.
Pretty quick and painless, we've just been working on getting those printers deployed. Been going pretty good. Few minor hiccups, but only because these are a little bit different, so. Been some training and stuff, so.
Now I asked this question to Brian Noggin this morning, do they get new laptops or new desktops too? Prosecutors, they just got them a few years ago, right? Were they signed up to get new ones?
Yes, we have, we got them.
So they're just not deployed yet down there?
They are.
Oh, okay, you already done then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then did you get a new employee yet?
Yes, they started on the fifth.
Fifth.
Cool. All the big printer change out, when's that scheduled for?
That's what I was talking about, that's what we've been working on for the last couple of weeks.
They've already started showing up?
Yes, all the, all the big ones that have to be returned to Xerox. Those have already been replaced.
Oh, cool. So it's all these little guys there?
So the little guys, they're all sitting up in my office, they're not as critical because we own those and we're just gonna recycle them.
Yeah.
Or what have you. But now that all the, the big main ones are all swapped out, then we'll start working on replacing all the little ones.
Only made me stumble for a second. I walked into a new printer and went, uh-oh, what do I do? It's not intuitive.
I know, I can't print either.
New employee fifth or something else?
I had sent a request. For the road department to be able to update their own website, is that a possibility at all? Did you see that?
I did. Yes, and I asked Tamara to sit with Mickey and, and go through how to do that, so thank you.
Yeah, I think that's really important. I think that's important so they can update where they're working this week and next week and that kind of stuff. Good, I can't think of anything else, Jeremy. I know come after you leave, I'm sure, but. I just asked Brian Noggin this morning about the broadband and prosecutors and he's hoping it's going to be enough. But is there a plan B if that isn't? I know you were having issues last time with the broadband down there from, you kind of canceled that Zipley contract going down that way.
Yeah, we would have to, we have to look at that Zipley contract again. Want to get something different.
Well, I'm just thinking with new software, new desktops, everything's going to be new down there, but the broadband's still going to slow them up. I don't know.
Have you heard any more?
I personally think it should be okay.
It'll be okay, okay.
Have you heard any more on East Lake Park? I mean, Idaho Power had signed Zipley's request, I think I sent that on to you.
They declined it?
Yes, I s-
No, they had signed it.
Oh, signed it.
I saw that, I haven't reached out to, I will do that today, I haven't reached out to. Our account we're up to see if they've moved on that yet or not.
Hey, any more questions then for Jeremy?
I'm good.
I think we're good.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you, have a great day. Cinda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we remain busy. We had scheduled another public hearing in July besides our thirteenth, because they continued APUD to a special meeting. So we could gather some more information. So we'll have one the thirteenth and the eighteenth.
And this is for which PUD?
Garnet Valley.
Oh, okay.
They wanted some additional information, they wanted some more details.
They just tabled it?
A specific date and time, which is July eighteenth at five. And then we'll have one the previous Thursday, so the thirteenth and the eighteenth. Lory will be gone one entire week in July for the Northwest Community Development Institute, that's the three-year program. And then she'll be gone another week in July. And hopefully we have a new person starting the fifth.
In your office?
Yes.
Awesome.
That replaced Jody.
So she's officially gone now?
Not that, no, Jody won't, Jody has committed through at the end of July because she'll be assisting in, in training. Nobody can replace Jody, it'll, it'll be a new person, have a new path, yeah.
She's got a lot of energy.
Um, but this can be just as good, if not better. Some of her stats, she did a presentation to the Planning and Zoning Commission at our last meeting. Our violations since she started a little over a year ago were a hundred and forty-three. She found thirty-two CUPs that were needed and twenty-two of those have been resolved. She has mass milled four large areas for lighting violations. If we have a number of lights that are not dark sky compliant in a certain area, we just mass mail the neighborhood. We don't want to single people out. And those are like Meadows at West Mountain, Fur Grove, Wagonwill, Falcon Point and Morning Dawn areas.
Those kind of subdivision areas is what she's hitting on?
Older subdivisions. And because, you know, they all have their old original lights up and we're just trying to mass market them. They need dark sky compliance.
But there's no enforcement as to whether they want to do it or not?
Yes, there is.
Oh, is there?
Yes, we, it's a requirement, the ordinance, and we do have enforcement capabilities. It's easier to do one or two holdouts rather than, you know, twenty people in the same area. So it's, we do a lot of education for the dark sky compliant ordinances. Most people are willing to come into compliance. And then one of the short-term rental companies, they've come up with a way to retrofit the fixtures that you can see the bulbs. It's like just a screen thing they stick up in there, make it opaque.
Is it, is there an issue about grandfathering?
We do not grandfather lights. We adopted the ordinance, I believe in two thousand and four, and they, there were three years in which they were supposed to come into compliance.
I was just curious, because you'll hear that from people that have been here forever.
Lights are not grandfathered.
Rancher down here.
So like the streetlights in Cascade, the ones that have the big plastic bulb around, are those dark sky rated?
I believe all of Cascades have become dark sky compliant, that's outside of my jurisdiction.
I realize that, but I have one of those in my yard and I'm wondering if I'm compliant or not.
Well, you need to look at it and determine whether or not it's a mercury vapor light, those old ones. We could look at it, but the, the trick is maximum thirty feet high. We prefer the twenty feet and then fully shielded so they're full cut off, so they don't project light out or up and create the sky glow, it's the sky glow we're, we're trying to prevent. A lot of people get upset with their neighbors and say, well, I can see their lights from three miles away or ten miles away. Well, it's a dark sky compliance ordinance preventing the sky glow, not a, I don't want to see your light at all.
Right, a little different problem.
We're, we're just trying to prevent the, the glow.
Okay.
So we, we, we do work diligently on that. And we really try to promote the time lights, so if someone's walking, they, they come on and then they turn off. And then every squirrel that walks by, you know, they flash, they turn into flashing lights. Since adoption of the RVC ordinance, we've, let's see, we have seventy-four. Eight of them this year, so that totals eighty-nine. One of them had to get a conditional use permit because they have too many. And then twenty-nine of those RVCs had to remove additional RVs to keep it at that three RV level. It doesn't mean they can't have a fourth, fifth, sixth person bringing RVs up every weekend. It just means that they can't establish more than three at that time.
Or is it for a certain amount of time, or is it just at any given time?
We say for the season, you can have three with an RVC permit. Before we adopted this ordinance, it was just wide open, you could have twenty RVs. So we adopted the ordinance, what, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, to try to rein in the number of campers on parcels to at least three. The maximum of three, but people can intermittently bring up more.
Okay.
You know, you get a lot of, you know, family reunions, especially around the three-day weekend holidays and where everybody brings their camper up.
This tells you the need for employee housing, you get that many RV camp permits.
Well, and then when the old Boise Cascade properties stopped camping on their properties, a lot of people just started buying lots around Valley County so that their families could camp.
Oh, yeah.
Glamping, glamping was very popular last year. There were twelve sites, three of them obtained conditional use permits and the others removed ads and stopped advertising. Solar panels, she's violated five, two received permits, and we have two conditional use permits coming up for those. And then one of the letters she just sent out, we haven't received a response. These are solar panels that are not situated on the primary structure. And then signs is an ongoing process. I don't know if anybody noticed, the three thirty-two square foot signs for a specific contractor. One was in, well, on Harrike Hill, one was on Roseberry and one was up by Coho. Those are not allowed, you know, we don't allow the off-premise signs. But what they do is they, they go to the landowner and say, hey, can I put up this sign, I'll give you a hundred dollars a month or something. And so we chased that one. And I believe all three of those signs, I know two, there's two in my jurisdiction have been removed.
Somehow, so that when they put up signs like at a construction job site.
That's fine.
Those are okay?
Yes, active construction jobs.
Okay.
But not, you know, just advertising, I, I do this work.
Yeah.
Where she's chasing the junk car guy, because they move theirs around.
And what about real estate signs that are, have sold on, how long are they allowed to stay up?
Supposed to be up, they're supposed to be removed, I think it's fourteen days. There was the, the one on Old State Highway, it was the middle of winter and they needed to take that down. The people he hired to take it down, I mean, it, it's, there's always something. You know, well, the people I hired to take it down didn't show up, okay, so finally he came and took that one down himself.
Well, I'm just speaking of the ones that are out by me that have, the ground has sold and they have sold on them, knife, knife rip, knife?
Knife.
Knife.
Yeah, John.
They've been there for a long time and there's five of them.
He's, he's on our list, yes, they're at Proakry.
But.
And we need to, I don't know if the, the front acreage is for sale at all.
No, it was all the stuff back behind, back behind Goslin, that sold, the stuff up front is not for sale.
Okay, yes, and that particular company is sometimes difficult. But eventually they'll get them down. We see a lot of the directional real estate signs, you know, people put them at intersections. We go let them know, if they keep them up, then we'll go lay them down. If they keep doing it, we just pull them.
That's why I had to quit real estates and was stealing my signs.
Yes, we did.
She has a huge pile of a hundred house, you should see it.
Ended up in the landfill.
Well, back in the two thousand and four to two thousand and eight, we stacked them all down at the road department and told people, just go down there and find your signs, there were hundreds. I mean, everybody wanted to sign at every intersection of Valley County. But now all of our, typically, most of our local realtors know that they can't do that. And then they let other people know or they let us know and it's, as long as, you know, we don't do the broken window syndrome. And, you know, when starts and then hell start. And let's see, short-term rentals year-to-date, it's three hundred and thirty-one. RVCs since we adopted the ordinance, eighty-nine, and then ADU since we adopted that ordinance, ninety-one. We've been busy and we're positive about the future.
Cindy, to change the subject, have you looked at the latest McCalling Back Area zoning changes that they're proposing? Brian keeps delaying it, putting it off, but I would appreciate if you get time to look at those because they talk about EDUs and a bunch of stuff that I'm not quite familiar with.
I, yeah, I don't, I'll have to look for it.
Um, I'll see if I can send it to you, if you can't find it.
That'd be great.
I'm in some hard reading.
Yeah, the, the specific one that you want me to look at.
Anything else?
Yes, one, one other thing, you've scheduled the Valley County Waterways Management Plan for one o'clock. Does everybody have a copy or do you need a copy?
Yeah, I have it online, but did we ask Mike to come or anybody else to?
I'll be, I'll be present for.
Anybody from Waterways coming, Kevin, do you know? Okay, you guys will be here because we need you guys here to tell us what's going to work and what's not, so.
I sent it to all the sheriff's department, but I, I think this one is just the kickoff to, you know, the processes we move forward, how we're going to pull this thing apart, who's working on what, you know, it's kind of a process as much as anything, but we will get started on the legalities of some of it, so.
Okay.
All right.
See you this afternoon.
Thank you. Mr. Laxson.
Good morning.
Good morning. Like everybody got a lot of sun this weekend, my gosh.
Not enough.
Not enough.
So, this is rust.
Last night's storm was quite.
This is from rust, this is not from the sand. When you move slow, the rust grows.
Well, I've been sharing, I, I listened to Jeremiah this morning and, and he had a comment about how I can't do the same things I used to do, but I can do things better now that I couldn't do before because of that. Get a little older, get a little more wisdom, get a little more knowledge. I kind of appreciated that actually. Things are moving forward, we'll have, as of July first, we'll have things start shipping. We've got picnic tables and fire pots coming in for brush brick. We'll get the contractor and make the hardened pads for where the camp posts, camp pads will be, camping will be out there. The Cabartan, we're getting closer on the permitting with the Corps of Engineers and Water Resources. That's always a challenge, it's going better than I thought though, so Dave's doing a really good job on that. The Cougar Mountain Club will be up soon, not right away, they're going to restain the center building at Wellington. So we'll have, we've done the whole tour now, we've got everything restained and new roof and things are going pretty well down there for our oldest facility. We submitted a concept drawing to IDL for Little Pay at Lake and they were really appreciative of, of it, liked the concept. And now it's just kind of in their court to, they need to come up with some numbers on what it would take us to lease that property before we move forward on, of course, when we have the CIP meetings, that'll be in order to, to do the build-out. But at least we got the concept in, they liked it, they liked working with us, so.
I'll learn my question on that, we can ask during the CIP too, but I never did ask the question, how long will those leases be? I mean, if we put hardened campgrounds on that IDL ground, will they go longer than two years or they just have to repay us for any improvements?
So our, well, they do have to repay us for any improvements, but our original leases, years ago, we used to get twenty-year leases. That's what they had, but then we had the shakeup in the AG's office, they, they went and started. That's what they had, but then we had the shakeup in the AG's office, they they went and started looking at all their leases. They didn't like the way the wording was on it, on a bunch of it, so went back. I have been told that once, of course, we've also got that land transfer issue that's coming up. We don't know how that's going to go, but once that's all said and done, we might get back to twenty-year leases again. I'm not really worried about it, I know the Forest Service, even if there's a land transfer, they don't want to be the managers of those properties. So as long as we're in the discussion, and I know that our congressional's know that we want to be in the discussion. So I think we're in pretty good shape there. And and we'll, I'll be watching it constantly. That's most of my heart, make sure those things are, go into perpetuity. I sent you guys the information about the backcountry airstrips and I know that'll be a big conversation. Not this next weekend, but the following weekend is the Idaho Recreation Council meeting. And I'm kind of feel pretty honored that Johanna has volunteered to be the guest speaker there to talk about. How the success of Citra and how well, you know, with the volunteers, how they've done it. And it's kind of exciting to have Valley County be in the lead again. Funny how that always seems to work out. I I just, I really appreciate that. And I've got the information on the BOR that you gave me and I will start that project this afternoon. Making sure that we kind of, see if we can change that direction a little bit.
Is there any hope for changing that BOR?
Yes.
Mindset?
Yes.
Good. Larry, I was in contact with the aeronautics supervisor for ITD this weekend. The guy's name is Dan Connor. I have his card, I'll get it to you for your contact, but they're meeting today, I think. Normally what we would do is you get on the agenda, you bring the letter of support and then we'll talk about it. But I'm going to put him in contact with you. So you guys can work out what that letter should kind of say.
Right, and and. I I think at this point, we'll wait for the Forest Service response, of course. And the Forest Service is going to have to defend, but in order for them to defend, because. They try, so. Idaho Recreation Council will sign on to that lawsuit. And hopefully we will be able to get some of the counties to sign on with us, with with IRC and defend. What's always been meant to be there and should stay there.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Slow nibble. Just to keep taking it away every year. Piece by piece.
Keep trying.
Where are we on Clear Creek, did you already say, and I didn't hear it?
No, Clear Creek. As soon as we get through July first, we can start doing the rough end down there, we can get get that part done. I I should have mentioned that our ball of toilets have gone up to a hundred and twenty days out. So we got ahold of Jeff, who is, who has for some in-kind work to dig the hole for us. He said he can dig in November and December, and that's what we're looking at now is probably. Mid to late November, early December before they show up, which is kind of tough for us, but. You know, that's the the nature of the beast right now. We're getting ahead of a lot of other people because we got them ordered ahead of a lot of other people.
Good, good.
Anything, any questions?
Anything else?
Keep up the fight.
Yep.
Fourth of July is coming up, guys, fun weekends.
Yep, stay home and guard the fort.
We'll be working the whole time, thank you.
Thanks. Hey, you guys need a break?
Yes, sir.
Take five minutes, Scott, then we'll get to you next.
And we did, uh, um, Timber Creek did buy it, so they bought five thousand dollars. So, um, they're gonna take it, so. That's getting started today at noon, electricians there are gonna disconnect it, the paper from Wesco. Um, they got their crane and forklift delivered last Friday, so that's, uh, underway. Um, the annex furnace and A C is all complete up there now and stuff.
Good.
So it's good to go. Um, we got the B F D, uh, uh, installed on the, uh, cooling tower up there. So, uh, he's just gotta do a little more control work and complete the graphics for our computer. Or, you know, so we can, uh, turn things on and off and monitor things.
Now, does the veins, all that's fixed, the veins?
No, not yet.
Not yet, still working on?
We have to, well, this spring or this fall, we're gonna have to replace the exhaust louvers up there. Cause at some point, something went wrong in the process of, uh, the controls of that and they were disconnected. And for a long time, well, they're just opening the intake ones with a pipe wrench and closing them with, in the fall. But the, uh, exhaust ones were never, we ever opened again. So that thing's been deadheading up there for a number of years and they've, uh, basically corroded and rusted shut. We got a, a bid from ACO to replace them this fall when we can kinda take the cooling tower offline for about nine grand to replace. Those and then they will be put back into the sequence of them opening first and, and things, so.
Working right.
Yeah, working right, so. Um, uh, I'm getting to budget, um, I got the thinking on our janitorial line. We've always kind of budgeted just for what, um, the contractor does, the courthouse and the sheriff's department. Now I have these satellite spots, we have, uh, you know, the, the prosecutors, we have U of I. We're doing periodically bathrooms at the fairgrounds and now we have parks and wrecks. So I think, um, we need to increase that budget line. Um, we have a local cleaning service doing all the satellite, well, except for the prosecutors where, um, Hannah does it. But U of I, the fairgrounds and up there, um, is a local janitorial service.
Is it the same as the one that cleans?
No, that's K B S, um, and, but they are interested in bidding on it. It's, uh, Dick, uh, Bender.
Or Vandenberg.
Vandenberg, yeah. It's, uh, his services is doing the U of I and stuff, um, so. And they are looking at, uh, he is interested in bidding it this year for here and stuff, so. And then on top of that, um, I don't know what the agreement is soil conservation, but I was told last week that I'm supposed to be supplying cleaning supplies for them now, something to clean their office over there. Said historically we have, but, um.
Didn't know that.
I didn't either, so anyway, but.
How often do they meet there, Scott, once a week?
Well, no, now, since they started this coalition, um, they're there almost every day now.
Indeed.
So, that, on top of that, I'm next week gonna move my office, I'm gonna move over to where is, um, it's just too much interruption, them in and out and, and stuff with them there, um, I think, so. I can't do it this week, but, uh, next week, um, I gotta get with I T and schedule them to move the computer and electronics over there and then we just have a couple file cabinets in my chair and that's about it. Move over there.
Have we heard anything about the soil and water equal? What are you talking about? You're talking about that right there?
Yeah.
No, we haven't, yeah, we saw, we're gonna meet sometime in July to have that.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna, with them in and out and stuff now.
They're using it every day, that's gonna be a tough one.
Um, I gotta thank the road department, I, I talked with the Wes up there, Russ up there last week, um, and they did great around the, um, site force and, and stuff, so, um. And I do wanna, uh, this, this year purchase a snow blower for the tenant to use, so we don't have gates flying open and smacking people's vehicles again. Cause they can't quite get back around there with the, the plow equipment, so. And stuff, um, working on R F Ps, um, Oki approved the one for, to put out to, uh, erect the cover over the, um.
Well, good.
So, get that out, cause it's scheduled to be delivered about the middle of August. And then I'm just about done with the propane one, um, and things.
Scott, we have to wait until it gets here to actually put in, uh, concrete.
Also, if I can get the R F P out and, and talk to contractor, um, I may have to get a new office trailer though for there. Or with a rental one we have, or I think actually Lake Shore rents it. They used to have a smaller one, it kinda looked almost like a, um, a Conex, it was smaller. Um, cause the eaves at the back, at the edge of the fence are gonna be eleven feet. And that thing's like twelve foot tall, so. Uh, uh, my mistake, I didn't take that into consideration.
So does Lake Shore have a shorter one than you say?
Well, this, they actually rented, it's a company, it doesn't, it don't belong to them. So, they'd used to have one that sat down behind the Baylor building and it looked like a s- real small Conex. But it was actually, you know, had a heating, air conditioning unit on the end of it and everything. And so may it look, if they can bring something like that back up and, and replace that one with it.
Would that be their responsibility and not ours?
Well, I'd, I'd have to contact, you know, them and, and, uh, then ask them if they could do that.
I'm assuming you wanna get it out of there before we get it boxed in in the roof.
Yeah, well, they can't put the roof on or get even probably the, uh, the rafters up or the purlings, you know, cause it's too tall.
Yep.
And stuff. Um, I think that's about all I've got right now and things. Guys have any more questions or anything else?
We were gonna hear back from those guys that did their presentation.
Well, that's, I do actually have, we, we have to sit down with, um, Lake Shore and have a workshop cause, um, cause they have exclusive contract for that up there. Um, one thing I was, you know, Oki sent a, um, an email out to Sherry and I on that, um. One thing, I was reading a contract, the material doesn't become theirs till it's put in one of their trucks or anything or handled by their processing equipment. Cause they're not processing it or hauling it, um, I don't know where the line's drawn, that's something we have to discuss with, with Oki on, um. You know, and then they get like, I don't wanna give them fifteen percent just for picking up the phone and saying, hey, Timber Creek, you need to come grind the pile. Um, they do that on everything, they call Marty's Refrigeration, he comes up, sucks all the stuff out. They throw fifteen percent on us and send us a bill, I just, uh, a good contract.
No, and I think there's a lot of things in that contract we need to pull out of it and do ourselves.
I was up there this weekend, the tires are all over the place again, the bins are all full, so now they're stacking them around them. And tires have become something you're hard to get rid of, nobody wants them anymore, you know, they were grinding them and making playground equip, you know, stuff, but they quit doing that. Um, they were mixing in road materials, um, I don't know what people are doing with tires anymore.
And I think we need, uh, probably you and Brian maybe to write a letter and saying, these are the things that we're looking at in our contract that you're not adhering to.
Yeah.
And send it to them. You know, the tires are their responsibility, it's not our fault they can't find an end user.
Yeah.
Figure it out, you know, get a warehouse.
Yeah, but I gotta warn you, the thing that you gotta be careful of, just like Scott said, they're gonna charge you whatever it costs to get a room plus fifteen percent.
Well, they do right now, I mean, I mean, the tires, if they have Castle Tire was, I believe the people coming up and then they, you know, they take them down there and dump them on the floor and then they push them in, in their truck and then, you know, they take whatever, add fifteen percent to it and send us a bill. They are more involved with that one, cause they have to do bring the roll offs down and, and, and help load them, but.
Is there a problem with tires going into a landfill?
Yeah, they, you can't put them in. Now, the, the, some of them end up, cause you know, you'll notice on the Clay Peak bill, we have a charge at times for tires and tires and rims. I'm not sure what Clay Peak's doing, if they're pulling them out and processing them different, um, but if they bury them in the ground, they come back out. Come back up out of the ground.
Really?
Yeah, I think unless they cut the sidewalls out of them or something, then you have to have a machine that cuts the sidewalls out. So it's just, yeah, you just can't push them, they used to burn them, but then.
Yeah, that's, that won't happen.
Yeah, then pile, the tire piles catch on fire and then they're, they burn forever.
They'd be have to be cut in half to be able to push them into a landfill.
Yeah, so tires have become a dilemma with this kind of.
Wonder if we could talk to like, uh, Les Schwab or some of those guys, see where they're going with their used tires.
Yeah, cause they, um, I mean, they, you know, you get a, um, a disposal fee whenever they put new tires on, so they gotta be going somewhere. Um, I can actually ask Alpine, cause they're gonna do some tires for me here this week.
They have a pile up behind their place.
But, um, you know, you turn them into feeders for horses and stuff, turn them inside out and, you know, that's what we used to do in tractor tires. That's kinda become a thing of the past, too.
They are a problem.
Mm-hmm.
But I agree with Sherry, I think maybe in the near future here, sometime this next month, we could all get together and look at that contract and have a work session, all of us go through it and say, you know, this is maybe something we should be doing and they should be doing and see if they'll, they're willing to amend some of that.
Yeah, I mean, it's a very advantageous contract for them.
Oh, yeah.
And there's no reason for them to open it back up and change anything.
No.
You know.
And that's what I think, if there's something on there that, you know, they're called out for and they're not doing it, we need to hold them accountable to that.
Yeah.
This is part of your contract, you need to make this happen.
Yeah. And there's no redundancy, like they used to have two loaders up there, you know, right in the middle of free dump week, you know, it goes down. And, um, they wanted to borrow one of ours and, oh, you know, it's, also when we rented the big excavator, they brought it down to load trailers with, cause Peanut went down, you know, they should have paid us for the time they used it, you know, um. They're asking for another one up there, but that's their responsibility to provide an excavator up there to sort and stack with, not us. Eric's asking the girls, when's the county gonna rent us another excavator? We're not going to, that's up to them.
Their contract.
Yep, so, um, it's, we gotta get something, we, we gotta sit down and, and get it worked out.
One, we'll work with Oki and you work with Oki and see if we can't schedule a day here pretty quick, Doug, to get on, it's just a workshop to go through that.
We gotta do something, cause that C and E pile is just, it's a monster, it's getting bigger.
We need to get it moving on that before summer's out.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, Scott, before you're done, have you looked at that grant that we've received? And, I mean, I have it pulled up, but I haven't looked through everything. Will it pay to grind that C and E pile or the woody debris up there? I mean, what are we gonna use that hundred and fifty thousand for?
I think we can apply it to, if, you know, we get something ironed out, um, cause I thought so, we could either rent or apply it to the purchase of a stationary, then she kinda, the gal kinda said, no, we could, or we could use it to help offset the cost of having contractor do it.
I think we need to go through that thoroughly and make sure that, you know, whatever we do is gonna be, um, acceptable. Maybe have McKenzie really pour through that.
Okay.
But we need to see how we're gonna use those funds and use them appropriately. That is to start establishing a program.
Yeah.
And so it's not a one-off, just paying a contractor, I don't think.
Cause it would be nice if, if Timber Creek's affordable, so we don't have to go and lay out almost two million dollars to buy everything, do it. Um, have them, you know, with their mobile equipment come up, grind it two or three times a year. Once winter gets here, we're done with it, um, we don't have to really worry about the two piles. Um, Pacific Steel is gonna be here the seventeenth of July and start bailing up the metal pile also up there and stuff, but, um, yeah, it would be.
See if we can use it for that, but I just don't wanna do something and, and have to pay it back.
Yeah.
And if we can't use it, we may as well turn it back in so that, you know, somebody else can use those funds.
Can we use those kind of funds for buying excavator or leasing one or are we allowed to do that?
That's what I'm asking him to research.
It's, it's paid for about half, half of those things. We have that full grant, it's electronic.
I do.
Maybe you could shoot that over to us and we can read that in our spare time, but I like Scott's idea, setting up a long-term plan with these guys, just to plan on coming up every year for X amount of dollars to grind it and haul it out.
Twice, yeah, cause the woody debris pile is also, it's huge right now, it's, you know, they've been hauling brush like crazy and especially with all the development and, you know, all these big techs trailer, dump trailers with stumps and things in the back there.
I don't know if you guys have noticed over the years, maybe the fact that we're not getting as many people burning out in the valley floor as we used to get in the summer. It's kinda gone down, which was the intent of that, was to keep the air halfway decent up here. We're being successful, there's just no way to really measure it.
Yeah.
Remember the good parts of it as well.
So now, if we have them, so this does work, we have them grind up that woody debris pile and it becomes sawdust or whatever. Is that, we still own that?
Well, that's the deal we gotta see with these recycling companies, they grind it and take it away, they, they already said they have a market for it, so what kind of a break do we get?
Get for doing that?
Yeah, it could, it could apply to what, you know, our cost to them, you know.
Sure.
Cause they have a forty acre recycle center down there.
So they'd be able to possibly offset the cost by them being able to take it, resell it, have a market for it.
The issue is the construction debris, because that's got a lot of nails and metal and.
Well, it's gotta be, that also has to be sorted, as they're telling you, I mean, when we were having it ground last year, they, they were just grinding everything. According to them, according to regulations, we can't grind any pressure-treated, painted or stained wood. So that would have to be separated out and that would actually have to go to a landfill. You know, I don't know if they could pre-grind it and we could take it to Clay Peak or Adams County, but, um, it can't be used as bedding or hog fuel or anything else, it's gotta be.
All the contaminants that.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Scott, I think we need to engage with Tamrac Milligan too, because they got a grant also.
Mm-hmm.
Cause I'm curious what their, you know, thought process is, can we use our grant in support of them?
Mm-hmm.
And, and be able to utilize them moving forward, and what's a long-term solution?
Yeah, see if they're still going forward with the plan they showed us with the two big electric grinders, they were gonna make that offsite, see if that's still their plan or.
Cause they received one of these grants too, they're gonna do something.
Okay.
So how do we fit into that?
Mm-hmm, sure. Okay.
All right, thank you, sir, have a great day. Jeff, you're up.
According to who's watch, yours is slow. We don't forgive Jeff for anything, he deserves everything he gets.
Uh, not a lot to report, um. Met with Dave Bingaman, Steve Steubner and the Pathways Group last week. And they've got quite the plan, pretty impressive.
The Sampson Trail or all of it?
All of it, from Smith Ferry all the way to almost New Meadows. Um, they're seeing how this is implemented into the transportation plan, but, you know, they have their own comp plan, they have their own. I mean, I, I think as long as Pathways is mentioned in the transplan, saying, you know, refers you to the Parks and Rec Pathways Plan or something like that. We're, I mean, I got Sherry's email, I don't know, this weekend sometime, answered you this morning.
Yesterday.
There, there's definitely a couple of good things in there we need to look at, I've caught some flaws in it. Then just caught a couple of things, I haven't heard nothing from you two yet, so I'm assuming you're good with it.
No, I'm not really good with it, but honestly, I haven't read it all, Jeff, I only got to half of it.
Been doing?
Oh, I've just been circling around, twiddling my thumbs. Um, I wish there was more stuff in it about Cabarton being a second route, career to West Mountain and career to.
Well, there's, it's like I told Sherry in that email, this transportation plan's a living document, so every time we, if we wanna add something to it, it's, I don't know if it's called an addendum, it, but it's, every sticky note I put in the new master transportation plan, that's considered an update. But we can pick and choose, I mean, Cabarton Road is in there.
Yeah, both.
Well.
From fifty-five to the south and then also.
Cabarton North or Cabarton South, that's the part, it's hard to read.
Whole thing, well, from, from West Mountain Road out here by Pancarees all the way to the highway.
That's addressed and then West Mountain Road.
Yes.
Now, north is also addressed.
Yeah, north is already done, we repaved that last year.
Well, I got a call last week from Carol McGregor that apparently hit a jelly roll there in front of Daisy O'Crails and ripped off her belly panel on her Jaguar.
Oh, my goodness.
Where?
But at Dave McGregor's old Red Barn, there's a big jelly roll there, it's huge.
It was just down there last week, I.
But, anyway, she was not too happy and it's like, when you guys gonna pave that road?
Jaguar?
Hmm?
Jaguar?
In the Jaguar.
Oh.
And it was a plastic, piece of plastic that just ripped it off.
My wife, my wife ripped her spoiler off of her car on the road I live on, which is a county road and I had to crawl underneath there and fix it.
Oh, how was that? The other thing is I went and drove Norwood out to Shaline and boy, Norwood is pretty tough shape. If we were to end up redoing that S Bridge, I'm assuming that's where we're gonna get people in and out of there.
That is in the transportation plan to connect West Roseberry down Norwood to Shaline back out to the highway.
And actually, the gravel road is a lot better than the paved road on Norwood.
Pavement's horrible.
Oh, my gosh.
That was, got a notion on why that little section was paved out to where it was, but I don't have any proof of it, so.
Is that a, uh, what do I wanna say, homeowners association deal?
Ex-commissioner lived right there where the pavement stops.
Oh. Oh, I got it, that's what you gotta do, huh?
I don't know, I, I have no truth of it, but that's what everybody thinks.
Jeff, I got a question on that, we, we had a little presentation, who was it, from McKenzie? The, uh, grant writer on the S Bridge. And, yeah, that's a wannabe, love to see that grant come through, that's just, who knows? But timeline, say something like that came through this next year. Timeline for, if this does happen and there's, we get to do this bridge, say in two years or three years, whatever. Within that three years, are we gonna be able to get the roundabout while that whole section is closed? Around, I'm not going to Smiley or however, getting around that way?
Uh, it's up to you guys.
We gotta have a plan, we gotta have a plan on how to, we gotta have a plan on how to get people around.
See, and, and once, even if the, if the grant was approved today.
Right.
Which it's not, we are a minimum five years out from start.
Five years, okay.
So we have five years to, once the grant gets approved, that's when the gears really start turning going, okay, so this is gonna happen in twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, okay, so now we gotta start working on Norwood and Shaline, yeah.
And we also got to save five million dollars towards our share of the grant.
Yeah.
That's the hardest part, that's what we did on one wagon is we saved two hundred and fifty thousand, cause that was a million dollar match to get that one.
Yeah, and some of these, some of these grants are, uh, I think that, I can't remember what the raise grant was, but a lot of these newer grants they have out are twenty percent match. So.
It's pretty hefty.
I, I can't remember where the raise grant was in that, if that was a twenty percent or a no match or.
You're gonna have to start putting in your budget of grant line item and start accumulating funds. Um, we'd also talked to McKenzie in that, she had not, um, in the grant, she said you're gonna remove the old S Bridge. Alton, I both feel that needs to stay.
It would, it would stay, as part of the, after the Pathways meeting last week, um, they've got everybody together, so we had the B O R people, four-service people trying to work on this right-of-way stuff on West Mountain. The S Bridge is on B O R, so that, that's part of our.
Oh, they're gonna replace it?
No.
Good ask.
But we have to go through them on any, we have to go through them on any work that needs to be done, cause that's all within the reservoir waterway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're, we're, we were shooting for a hundred foot right-of-way, right-of-way. Four-service girl, I think her name was Kate, she just basically came straight out and said, we don't do right-of-ways, we'll grant you another easement. But it's different, so we can do the road easement, which we already have a sixty-six foot wide easement through the four servers and B O R. That's plenty wide enough for our road and utilities. The Pathways is totally separate, so the Pathways are the ones that are gonna have to go.
Now, when you're saying Pathways, explain that a little bit better to me.
What?
Explain Pathways a little bit more, you talking about bike riding pathways?
Yes, it's pedestrian, it, it's gonna be a detached pathway for pedestrians, bicycles. Get everybody away from that main, there'll be a division between the travel way and a, and the pathway.
Across the bridge area.
Well, basically from Donley all the way to Tamrac.
Oh, wow.
That's what we're trying for, and we're also from Tamrac South all the way down to Campbell Creek, we're trying to get a hundred foot to accommodate our road and a pathway, but right-of-way exists sixty-six feet, that's plenty wide for a thirty-six foot wide road with utilities. And if we need to straighten some corners out, we just kinda do a little swap of the easement, but they do not do right-of-ways.
Okay.
Um, that was actually a really good, really good conversation we had.
But they're amenable to doing a wider right-of-way?
No, well.
I mean, easement, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Four-service, four-service said they'll go up, or no, B O R said they're able to go up to a hundred foot easement.
Okay.
But the four-service is sixty-six foot.
That's it, solid at sixty-six.
That's it.
So we're gonna figure out how to do both the path and the road on that sixty-six foot.
The pathway will not, will not be part of our sixty-six foot road easement, let's say road easement.
It would be ours.
We're gonna have to get their own easement.
That has nothing to do with Pathways, that has nothing to do with utilities. So everybody else that's not the road department has to get their own easement for a path, utilities, whatever.
And our normal is seventy feet, isn't that correct?
Seventy foot is, we're, we're trying to get a hundred foot right-of-way on all of our major collectors.
Right.
So we can have the pathway and our, but that's through private property.
The four-service ought to step up to the plate.
Sixty-six foot.
They need to change then.
The issue is they can't sell ground. They won't let them sell any ground, that's the issue.
No, they don't sell it.
No.
And B O R doesn't sell it either, but they will go up to a hundred foot easement, but the same thing happens, the pathway has to get their own permission slip, I guess, to put a pathway in that easement.
So if you have, if we, you have a hundred foot easement, there's room to put the pathway in there?
Yes, just like out by the meadows.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a hundred foot right-of-way down through there. Cause to be a legal pathway, you have to be so far away from the traveled portion of the roadway or a division. Then the pathway has to be a certain width to meet a detached pathway. If it's part of the roadway, it's called a paved shoulder, you can't call it a pathway, you can't call it a bike lane, it's a paved shoulder, okay?
We'll address that with the four-service when we're back there in July, if there's anything we can do. Um, did they address the ninety-degree corner?
Yes.
By Tamrac Hall, are they gonna allow that?
We, we think we can move that roo- well, see, that, that's where we shift the easement over.
Okay.
So instead of having the center of the road thirty-three foot on each side, we can shift the road over to one side of that easement, or we can take that whole easement, is what I understood, and shift that whole sixty-six foot one way or the other.
Got it.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yep.
And then where's that put the parking area then, outside of that easement?
The parking area.
For the ninety-degree turn there?
Oh, no, I, we're, I think we're talking about two different ninety-degree turns, we're, the first, the ninety I'm thinking about is at the Brunsmann Lodge, right at Hawks Bay.
Oh, yeah.
That, that one right there has been planned for years.
To straighten out, so.
Make it more sweeping down through there.
Sure, sure, sure.
Um, the ninety you're thinking about, I think's down at North Lake.
Mm-hmm.
That one there's.
Problematic.
Yeah, and, and the fishing is involved with that corner, guys fishing, so we're trying to figure out how to, but that's through B O R. So if we can do a hundred foot easement through that area, we can kinda maneuver the road around, widen the road out to allow, it's easier for us to plow the road wider than it is to plow a parking lot with a road grader.
Sure.
So you just back up once or twice and drop your wing and you, you can wipe out another twenty foot of roadway pretty fast. And that's where the fishermen could park parallel on one side of the road.
Cool, there's a plan.
There's a plan. Um, what else we got going on? Um, we're trying to catch up on blading, I've got every blade out there possible. I've got a lot of guys training, so it's going kinda slow, but we're getting it. Um, I've got a blade up on Deadwood right now, trying to punch through that. Um, I've got a blade up on Deadwood right now, trying to punch through that last big avalanche. Cause we've got road problems down by Deadwood outfitters that I've really gotta get in there and address before the road totally disappears. We're gonna open that. Probably be open tomorrow, if not later today. We can get our grader down and get some of those washouts done.
How do you do that with the grader? You put a V on the front? Oh, okay.
Yep, and then just start working at it.
Yeah, just keep pushing it out.
Sent Bruce up there Thursday. He said the biggest avalanche was still about fourteen feet deep. A hundred feet long, something like that.
It's a lot of snow in the middle.
But it softened up enough to where he, he's able to get in there with that V and just kind of push his way down. He had a front tire blowout on him here about an hour and a half ago, so.
Oh, jeez.
Is Bruce Looper? I thought he was already retired.
This is last week. It'll be done Thursday.
He's already promised me he's gonna come blade my road.
Not if I keep him away from it, he won't.
I'm holding him to it.
Your road's in good shape. Go down and drive my road. Got three soft spots in it before you even get to my driveway.
Yeah, it's, it's not that great a shape.
Um, East Side Drive Bridge, I'm, I've got a confirmation email, I think, on my phone, but um, the thirtieth, it will be open no matter what.
Awesome.
Um, if they have to come back following week to do some cleanup, but they're planning on paving Tuesday or Wednesday.
Oh, good. They'll take a trip up there.
Only thing that'll screw that up is if it rains, cause they gotta put a membrane down on top of the bridge. Keep it totally dry before they pave it. And if there's any hint of moisture, they won't pave it. It'll just be opened up as a concrete bridge and let the traffic have it for the weekend, then they'll come back and pave it.
Come back and pave it.
But it will be open by this weekend. I've been pushing for that since Memorial Day.
Good job. Good job.
Um, East Lake Fork Road. Uh, we're having almost weekly meetings with Horrocks. Right now I am. Um, we're dealing with Gemma's Restaurant and the property owner on the north side of East Lake Fork in Swain's Industrial Park right there.
Mm-hmm.
Trying to widen the East Lake Fork out right there and allow wider, longer trucks to come on off the highway without making people back up and so we're working with Monte from the owner of Gemma's.
Yeah.
And we're not after a lot. We're just basically after, basically to radius the corners out and widen it a little bit through there, but we're really pinched in there because of Gemma's septic.
Oh.
Yeah, so we really can't go to the south, so that pushes it to the north on the other guy's property. And we're gonna end up, looks like we're probably gonna end up building a retaining wall. That'll be less impact to the property owner on the north. We can do basically a vertical brick wall instead of sloping it back at a two to one or whatever.
Is this part of this deal you're doing on East Lake Fork down to the bridge, widening that whole stretch or is this some extra?
From the bridge to the highway will look identical to the rest of East Lake Fork.
Right.
Jeff, is there any possibility of moving Gemma's septic to another site?
There's no other place to put it.
Have much room there.
It's all a parking lot. And I think they've got their main septic, their tank, I thi, their tank is just north of the building, between the building and the road. And then to the east, just a little bit, there's a big fenced in area and that's his drain field. That's all he has. There's no other place to put it.
Oh, crazy thought, but down on the ditch bank? I mean, can you do anything with that ditch bank and take off before Gemma's and make them an island? Think about that. The other thing is, so Jugs, um, Jug Handles, uh, original agreement, their C I P agreement showed us putting in a left-hand turn lane at that intersection.
We had a left-hand turn lane there. It lasted until the first semi truck came around the corner from the south and made the left turn lane back up out of their way so they can make the corner. We still wanna do that. We still wanna have three lanes right there. We've gotta get a little property from Gemma's to make the radius so the trucks don't have to go past the intersection and swing wide so their trailer doesn't wipe out Gemma's fence.
Again, any way we can do, you know, something on the other side of their building.
Not very much room there. I mean, the way it comes in at an angle like that, it would be really tough for southbound traffic to down in there. It, it'll fit. I mean, we're, we're whittling it down to what it's gonna look like here. We'll have a more of a detailed drawing here in the next couple of months.
Can you get, can you fudge more onto Swain's property or is?
Well, that, that's private ownership and he, the guy that owns that junk doesn't really wanna budge. And we really can't. Up to you guys, but we can't really make him sell us anything.
And the problem is that you shift too far, your center turn lane that's going straight is not gonna be in alignment on the other side of the road.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really, it's a.
Yeah, but we can shorten that turn, turn bay up, cause once we get past his property to that access that goes to concrete place, uh, motorcycle repair shop goes, once we get past that cut bank, we can we can really, we can put the right turn lane in or whatever. We can, that's where we can really start widening out whatever we need. And how far back down East Lake Fork we wanna go with the turn lane. I don't need that much, but we need something to at least accommodate three left, left turning cars or something. And we had three bays there and it, it was just too tight. Cause somebody had pulled into that left turn lane and sit there and then given up.
Well, nobody's gonna get around you.
With a dump trailer behind it couldn't make the corner.
What's I T D doing? Because they need a turn lane coming both south and north.
There's no room in there. They're gonna be doing eminent domain probably if they put anything in there, cause there's no room. They can bump over right to the Merck's front door. Bump all the way over to Gemma's fence line, which their well is right there, right on their property line.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, it's, we, we've been looking at that too, and there's just not a lot of room. I mean, Harry Stathis, when he owned that Merk, he was remodeling it. One of his thoughts was he was gonna tear it down and rebuild it. And law is you tear it all the way down, now you gotta abide by the setbacks. And he wouldn't have been able to even put a store in there, let alone fuel pumps and parking and.
All of it would've gone away.
So he kind of left everything up and remodeled it. And so I'll, I'll keep you guys in the loop on all that stuff. Just, I mean, yeah, it's, we're just barely getting started on it. Box, the road is only gonna be closed, what we're thinking is maybe four days when we put the big box covered in the irrigation. Other than that, it, it'll just, there'll be one lane open.
Well, we have other tight corners in the county too that we have to deal with.
Got a lot of them, but that's one of the main ones.
That's one of the main ones, yeah.
Yeah, just cause there are all the gravel pits and everything's down there.
Delivery trucks going out to Jug Mountain. You got the Cisco, Grasmic.
We got tons of stuff.
Coming from the south, trying to make that right-hand turn and they, they swing wide.
Yep.
But it sounds like, I mean, we're working on it. We're getting there. Um, grader I ordered last August is showing up today.
Oh.
Just in time for me to order the next one. Um.
You can steal a tire off of it and put it on that one.
You can bring that one out today and grade my road.
Come down and get it.
He's working on that road.
Oh, yeah, like I know how to run one of those. I can figure it out though, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, yeah, never mind. Um, what else we got going on?
It's not gonna impact you, but I've been in constant contact with I T D and all the dead trees. And their plan this year is to the Boise County. And I kinda had a little bit of a discussion with them Friday night about the fact that Valley County will not be ignored. Um, so we'll see where this goes, but.
They gonna use prisoners again or inmates?
I actually asked them that this morning.
Yeah, they'll come up and close the road to flaggers and drop the trees, get them pushed out of the way and then open traffic up while their prison crews working on the shipping and.
Cause I thought at one time I heard that they can't use inmates anymore. It was a liability.
He does all the time.
They should.
This morning. They said they were gonna try and, and find people. And I asked them, why not use inmates? And they said they'll think about that again, but.
Yeah, so the Boise can't, I, I agree with not getting ignored, but the Boise County sides, trees that are, those big ones on the edge of the road are bug kill. And they're at that prime time, ten years after a fire, where they're just falling over for no reason whatsoever.
They're just rotting off.
They're just rotting off. And pine trees rot off pretty fast once they're dead.
And I'm really glad. They've also opened the conversation with the Forest Service to do a full study about why these trees are dying. And so there's gonna be a full-on stu, yeah, I know. There's gonna be a full-on study. How much is salt? How much is bug kill? You know, what is the long-term plan between those two organizations to create an operations management?
You can drive down the road. I mean, all the pine trees are dead on the highway side, but they're still green on the other side.
Exactly what I said. I said the little sweep on all the trees that are rust colored, that's definitely your plow. That's not bug kill.
The big trees, most, all of them down there, they, they died a year after that big Banks fire went through.
Yep.
Bug, bugs always go in after a fire, cause the trees are weakened and that's when they hit the pine trees really hard. Um, what else we got going on? I found another pickup at Mountain Home Auto Ranch. Somebody, they ordered one on government contract. Nobody, the buyer didn't want it, so I just picked it up last week. Another three-quarter ton.
Is that for weeds?
No, that's for me at the road department.
Is that knowing C I P weeds is that for one too?
Yep, so I, I had four pickups budgeted for this year, twenty-three. And four pickups canceled.
Four haven't got canceled on you?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my.
Yeah, next, in this coming year, I just got a notice from the government people that Atlantis, which bought Ram and Dodge out, they're not making any cab chassis next year.
Ah.
You can't buy a plain Jane tradesman through the government pricing anymore. It's gotta be an S L T or higher. Which goes price. We might be running GM vehicles, because they seem to be the only ones with no restrictions out there.
So the one you just picked up though was in last year's budget. That's not a part.
Yep, yep. So I, I've been watching it. We're, we're right there. We're coming in a little bit lower than what I had budgeted for the new pickups.
Jeff, you know, it's Ford. You didn't do the same thing with the cab chassis?
With, um, Ford right now, from what Mountain Home Auto Ranch is telling me, the Fords might still be making the cab chassis.
So that's gonna affect our ambulances? If they quit making those.
Well, thing is, you, there's a difference between buying off a state bid or putting it out to bid. If you put a bid package out for a cab chassis F-five-fifty, it's not gonna go through the state bid process. It'll be a custom order vehicle.
Special order, huh?
Yeah, no, nobody's, Go Public's not buying cab chassis, so they're just not making them.
Hmm.
No reason to open up the factory for two weeks and build cab chassis when nobody but municipalities is buying them.
My goodness.
They used to kind of cater to municipalities and not anymore. And our government break isn't all that much cheaper than just buying one off a lot, but it allows us to go through the state bid.
Do we, I mean, is there any way to buy used that's worth a flip?
Oh, I buy used stuff. I just bought a pickup from SIPA F-five-fifty earlier this late, early spring, I guess, full mileage.
Do the diesels stand up longer than a gas powered?
Diesels stand up longer, but the vehicle itself doesn't last any longer. So you've got a, you've got a good engine and transmission and running gear, but the body's rusting off of it. So why spend the extra ten thousand dollars on a diesel?
That's cause all the stuff you put on the road.
I don't put very much on. Sixty-four tons of salt lasts me almost three years. And I T D, this shed right here goes through, I think, between three and four thousand tons every winter.
They're gonna supposedly change their product too, but we'll hear more about that.
They're changing it to the blue stuff, which is fifty percent less corrosive. And they have proof that it actually does that, but they will never, never, ever quit using salt on this roadway. They're saving lives.
That's not what they told me just this last week. They're looking at the blue stuff everywhere.
Yeah, the blue stuff. It's fifty per, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, but anything that melts ice is corrosive.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Beet juice is corrosive.
Yep.
Just look at our concrete sidewalks.
Yeah.
Jeff, this is kind of a C I P question, but, um, we're almost there. So weeds has carryover funds. They have a hundred and twenty-seven thousand in their remaining cash right now. And I'm curious if you guys have ever researched whether we can buy a weed truck out of that. This is probably gonna be for Doug too, but weeds has quite a bit of money in their cash balance right now. So I'm just.
Weed department doesn't have carryover.
Well, yes, they do.
Doug's looking it up, I hope. Cause we, we run that budget right down to the penny almost.
Maybe that's just to get us through the rest of summer.
Yeah, he hasn't touched, I mean, we just started spraying weed, so he's, he's gonna start using more gas, tires.
Get in there.
What, did you look that up, Doug?
We will, we can get into that into the C I P as we move forward.
I don't see that. Didn't see that. I look at the monthly budget stuff and I didn't see any major overage. It's not gonna get spent this year. So we, we haven't paid for his new pickup yet.
That would be.
Hold on, no, no, we didn't, nevermind.
It's not out of weeds though, right? That's what I'm questioning is can we buy something out of there?
I have a new pickup that will, that's on our C I P list to buy for him next year. New three-quarter ton.
And can he get by with a half ton there? Cause he's not, what does he carry?
He has one half ton on the fleet and that's what he hauls mill foil with.
So the three-quarter tons are to pull the U T Vs and all the.
Three-quarter tons are made like, the new one I'm gonna, the new one I just got was a thirty-five-hundred Dodge Dooley. That's the one that has the big water tank in the back and that's the one they do roadside spraying with. The three-quarter ton that I'm hoping to get next year will be the supervisor pickup. And that pulls those heavy Kubota side by sides and.
Living in March, you got a hundred and sixty thousand in there. So, I mean, there's money there.
Commissioner, we still have a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars budgeted for to expend out of the weeds budget, so I, I.
I'll go back and look at it, but we.
Say that there isn't gonna be any.
We usually run that down by September thirtieth. That money is down to about ten cents.
I mean, it does reflect a hundred and twenty-seven thousand in remaining cash, but there are still a significant amount of expenditures that would be coming out until October.
Okay, alright.
I'll go back and look at it, but yeah, that weed and pest, we usually got that right down to the nitty gritty unless something got canceled or something that I'm not catching.
What hasn't been, uh, expended is the mill foil, uh, that was budgeted for. That's thirty-five thousand. I don't think that that will be expended out, but I, I still think that we're gonna be very close to expending everything that.
Yeah, so we might have thirty-five thousand dollars left over, cause we weren't sure if the department ag was gonna do that again for us this summer, and they are.
Oh, nice.
So that thirty-five thousand will be.
But next year, we're gonna take it back.
Next year, we don't know yet either. So we put it in the budget again.
Yeah.
Just in case, but Steve thinks we're gonna get that contract back next year.
Looking for pennies. Thirty-five thousand.
Hey, yeah.
Almost the cost of that truck that we're gonna be approving.
Anything else?
Nope, can't think of anything.
Hey, I'm assuming Johanna's behind me because I can feel the hair on the back of my neck standing up.
We can see it from here.
Yep, see?
I hope she's carrying a baseball bat. Knock you into shape, Jeff.
Okay, our next agenda item is not an action item. This is a capital improvement committee presentation. Johanna, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Alright, I've got a presentation that I'll throw up on the screen, so if you. And this email this morning is that, just that one sheet?
It's just the one slide that came through corrupted.
Okay.
Which will be part of the presentation.
Okay.
So there's something more than what you sent us?
Um, so I sent Commissioner Mopin and I can forward it. Um, I believe it's like page twenty-one of the presentation.
We got some Chinese on one of them. We got some Chinese on one of them.
It, it came through corrupted.
I did see that. I'm going, something went wrong here.
But let me forward that to you as well.
That's alright, as long as it's part of the presentation, we'll have it. I just like to keep these. Where's Jeremy? Because we can't keep our emails, I have to keep all these things.
Right.
Or I could go get my email.
Alright, so I forwarded that along to you for future as well. Alright, so capital improvements committee. Um, the CIP committee is made up of seven members. Commissioner Mopin, Clerk Miller, Jeremy from IT, Scott Klingon, Jeff McFadden, Dave Stambaugh and myself. And in the past, we have met, uh, we start meeting around April and we start running through the different, uh, projects that are presented to the committee. And the requirements for the committee to review projects is any, uh, single purchase over twenty-five thousand dollars.
Got you.
So, um, this year we had eighteen projects submitted to us and the committee took. I think we were actually able to get through all of them in one two-hour-long meeting. So, um, each person who submitted the project was able to present. The committee was able to ask questions and we reviewed each one. And then the next step in the process is in the month of May and sometimes in June, we go through and we score each of the projects. And the scoring process is, uh, seven criterias and each of the criteria gets a ranking. And each of the seven members of the committee ranks each of the projects. And then we take the average score. And then we'll list the projects by high, from highest score to lowest score. Um, new to the process this year, uh, we would like to add a few more meetings throughout the year. What I found was, uh, we'd get to the CIP committee meeting in April. And the first thing I wanted to know was, well, what haven't we done yet? We approved all of these projects last year, but there's still some that are outstanding from. The current year and maybe even the prior year before that. So, um, this year to help make this process a little bit more efficient. I would like to add two additional meeting dates. So one in September. And that would be right after the budget hearing where the budget is approved. So we would. Understand at that point if any of the projects are being rejected for this year, which ones are being funded and what the timeline is for moving forward on those. Uh, my most important component to this process is that some of these projects are multi-million dollar projects. And I need to make sure that we have the liquid cash available to pay for them when we are ready to implement them. Um, and then the fourth meeting would be somewhere in the late January, early February time. And this would just be essentially a progress report. Have you started your project? Do you see any delays? Do we need to re-up this project for the process next year? So what I'm going to do now is I'm just going to go through each of the eighteen projects that were submitted to the committee. Um, they've been ranked from highest to lowest and that's the order that you're going to see them in this presentation. I'm going to do a really high level. So just, you know, maybe a minute on each project. I did ask if all of the individuals who submitted the projects could be here today, just in case there was questions. So. Feel free to direct your questions to me or to whomever in the audience you feel is appropriate. Um, alright, so the very, the highest ranking one was the transfer building refurbish. And you're probably familiar with this one because a couple of years ago, we had Great West Engineering, uh, complete a study on the transfer site. And help us understand how we could go about fixing all of the problems that we've identified at the area. Uh, this is a high-dollar project. Estimated cost is about one point one million dollars. It's scored really high because there's the obvious need for these improvements to be made, but there's also a separate funding source. So we increased the commercial solid waste fees last year, so we have funding coming in to be able to cover these projects. Any questions about that one?
So you're talking about basically a new skin and new steel frame on just the front door. Does this talk about fixing the floor that?
This would.
That's part of it too?
This would include fixing the floor, um, fixing some of the, uh, steel posts that are around the man doors. Um, making the concrete walls on the side of the building taller so that they are less susceptible to damage by large equipment. Um, and then replace the metal siding on the building.
So if. Our, uh, Lake Shore disposal is running this whole process, is that right? Do they not have any responsibility for the repairs that are on this building at all? I mean, they're the ones letting it be destroyed. Which is just like anybody, you know, if you own it, you're going to take better care of it. If you don't.
It's my understanding that that would need to be negotiated in the contract that is settled with them each year.
It's something we need.
And that has been addressed with them in the past. We own the physical house.
Well, Scott, can you get taller cement barriers on the inside? I mean, they make those.
Uh, you really need to be in the microphone. Yeah.
You want to come up to the microphone?
Yeah, that's a good point. Thanks. What we want to look is at the barriers on the side, because when they get like we, you know, their trucks were broke down two weeks ago and we end up with huge piles. They start shoving them piles. It rolls off the side. The, the concrete barriers, you know, at this time are about four foot. We need to look at. Some way of extending those up high enough. So when they, when we do get large volumes and there's not going over those against the siding. Um, we had a couple of years ago and we had the, for some reason they didn't have manpower and stuff. We had the trash, you know, clear out to the end of the concrete out there. And, um, actually it was their supervisor got pushing, pushed stuff through the side of the building. Um, took out the man door that they had installed as emergency escape. Um, they did repair the siding and stuff. They never did repair the man door. Um, damage to the steel columns. There's no way people are doing that with their trucks and stuff up there. It's the big weight on the back of the, of the. And I had noticed up there, I was up there this weekend and it looks like they run into the side of one of the doors again, the trim on the side is bent out and stuff. So it's just. When they let the trash get out past the doors and they start shoving it in the building, they're just, uh, tearing it up. Like you say, they have no cards in the game. It don't matter to them.
But you know, when we had the study done, it was recommended that we build another one of these facilities next door to this one.
No, that never really, I recommended doing another one at this point.
Well, I thought that was the goal was to have where you could do two bays or two trucks at the same time. The other question I have is, is can we look at something? Well, maybe I'm, I'm, I'm probably not in the right spot to say this, but if we did one where it's not covered, but we could only use it in the summer. Push stuff off into those trucks.
I wouldn't, you know, because with the wind and the birds and everything else dragging stuff, we'd have trash scattered everywhere. I think if we had an uncovered, you know, um, spot. We get enough, we get a, the picking added enough and things and stuff, um.
You just need to add this to our workshop. We'll part their contract and see where their liability or.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have skin in the game. They'll be a little more careful with.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we've got to make sure we fix that problem first before we spend a bunch of money on this and go right back and destroy it.
And, and we have the shop we provide for them there and I need to get pictures of it. It's just thrashed inside. It's a pigpen.
So Scott, if they, they raise that wall up, say four feet or six feet, whatever it is. I mean, they put inch and quarter plywood up another eight feet around that whole thing. Got a guy in his excavator in there. It would take a whole lot of abuse compared to blowing our tin out.
We're looking at extending the concrete up. Would like to see, you know, if we could, I know we talked with Great West, if they can. Add on to the concrete that's there or come inside and, and extend it up. Um, also talked about taking heavy gate expanded metal. Um, and attaching to the purling so it overlaps existing. That's something to keep, uh, um, the stuff and getting between that and, and the sheet metal siding.
Yep.
So we're not going to be able to get too deep on every one of these.
Right, otherwise it's a little three o'clock. I, I will say that, uh, the study that Great West Engineering produced also included a financial model. And we will be presenting a financial model update to the commissioners on July tenth, so that we can go more in-depth on specific transfer site. Um, questions at that time.
Okay.
Any other questions on this one? Alright, the second highest ranked project was the arena and bathroom improvements for the fairgrounds. Um, this is suggested to be funded out of the ARPA dollars. It includes, uh, additional bleachers, crow's nest replacement and the. Refurbish or just reconstruction of, uh, bathrooms at the fairgrounds.
I know we looked at one time, I think it was Larry or David, remember at a sixth place. We do with CXT with a, on the east end, a place where you could, you know, have a countertop and you could sell stuff. And it was like a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand. For a new CXT on the same spot, which I, you know, I think that would be a huge improvement. My concern is that. If the road department is eventually gone, is this going to interfere with a future community center? Are we? Getting ahead of ourselves or by building a new bathroom and then have to come and move it or tear it down or later? I don't know. That's what I'm asking. There's no big overall plan of what's going to happen after the road department's gone down there.
These were the recommendations provided to us by the fair board. So I don't know if that discussion has happened with them about future planning of where these. Restrooms would be located, if they're going to be in the same spot, or if they would be in a more convenient location for future growth.
Do you know the cost of the bleachers, the new bleachers?
I do not know the specific cost.
We'll get those in the tenth too, July?
Uh, no, that, the presentation on the tenth is only related to the transfer station. Um, these projects, this presentation is meant to be a high-level overview of each of the individual projects. Once they are approved, I believe that would be when the details would come.
Cause we're also, you know, supposedly after the fair this year, they're going to redo the whole arena fence and all that's supposed to happen. And then, you know, where are we going to build that crow's nest? Where's it going to be?
This is just setting aside those.
On the north end.
This is just committing the funds, funding mechanisms that they come from, so.
Okay.
Alright. Uh, number three is the woody debris and CND grinding equipment. And I know that there's been a lot of discussion about this. Whether it needs to be in the contract at Lake Shore or we heard the presentation last week from the third-party contractor. We asked Scott to submit an application for this project. In case both of those fell through. We would understand the funding required to be able to purchase this equipment and deal with it on our own. Again, this project scored pretty high because it has that funding source. This, the solid waste fund within Valley County has. A substantial balance of remaining cash because we've been preparing for all of these capital improvement projects. So this would, um, include the purchase of several pieces of equipment and, um, the cost of transferring it off-site. The final product off-site.
So this includes the long haul trucking part of it?
Correct. Right, any other questions?
What is the funding source for that?
The funding, the funding source is the remaining cash balance in the solid waste, uh, fund or department, which is not a property tax. Funded department. That, um, department is funded by the fees that we collect in special assessment. That which those bills do go out on property taxes and then the gate fees at the actual transfer site. So each residential home in Valley County is charged a hundred and ten dollars annually to pay for their solid waste. And then each commercial business is charged based on the amount of, uh, solid waste that they produce. So it's, there's a sliding scale. There's seven different categories.
Question before you move on, Johanna. Scott, we don't have three-phase juice up at the transfer station, do we? So we're looking at a diesel-operated grinder.
Yeah, and the picture that we have here, this is the grinder that we are looking at.
That's the actual one?
That is the actual one.
That he does. So the, is the excavator part of the grinder? Is the excavator behind it another piece of equipment?
The excavator behind it in that picture is a separate piece of equipment.
Right, also use the hundred and fifty thousand to start this that we just got in that grant because that's establishing a program. This would be instead of using a vendor. This would be a long-term solution instead of a short-term vendor solution.
Well, my question is, do we need two excavators?
Um, I believe, so the.
Price it as an excavator and a support loader.
Front-end loader, okay.
And then Scott, remind me, would this be trucks that we purchase and own or would we pay contract?
So that's in this cost as well?
Yes.
Again, how much?
Escavator, loader, tractor.
Well, this establishes the whole program. I mean, how, so what we, what I would want to ask myself is. How many years is that of a vendor? I mean, if we could actually pay for our own program in three years. Why would we go out and have a vendor do it when we can establish it ourselves and be cost-effective for the community as we move forward?
And also this is the capital investment into the program. This doesn't take into account any potential revenue from the by-product of grinding this. Product, uh, which is an unknown, largely unknown at this point.
And I'm assuming it doesn't take any of the labor costs either.
Scott, I, I believe that Scott said we would not need to add to our labor force to be able to do it. He feels.
So we're going to ask Lake Shore to run the equipment?
No, we would use our.
So it's probably our own employees?
Correct.
Okay.
So, and we would not need to add to the employee count to accomplish this.
That depends on our agreement with Lake Shore.
Alright, next. Okay, uh, the Clear Creek Campground. This is the first of three campground projects that were submitted by the Recreation Department. And this one scored very high. Um, this proposed campsite is nineteen developed, uh, camp sites on Valley County-owned property. And, um, you know, the need for recreation in Valley County obviously has increased in recent years. And this would establish a site that's already being used for recreation, as you can see in the aerial photo there. And, um, provide a little bit of law and order to, to the actual site itself and. Produce revenue that would be able to pay for any ongoing costs. Um, the proposed expense to Valley County is forty-nine thousand dollars and they're requesting this money out of i- either ARPA or Pilt dollars. Um, this would be funded largely by a grant if we were, um, to, to push this forward.
This will be camping spots. This will be whatever.
Yep.
Toilets. And it's important to notice, if you look at the bottom of the screen, you see some white vehicles in the area. That's where we turn around the snowplow in the wintertime.
There's already a snowmobile parking lot here, so expansion of existing use. So the forty-nine thousand, that's grant match, correct? So it's a much larger fund to do this, but this is just our portion of grant.
Yeah, the cost on this project is upwards of two hundred thousand dollars, but the grant match portion that Valley County would pay for is forty-nine thousand.
Awesome. You know, Larry, are we able to use the income like off Wellington to go towards that match? Are we saving that money we make off that campground in it for match money or how are we doing that?
We have never held that money, but doesn't get used, goes back into, uh, general funds, I think. Is that correct? Um, but we could do that. We could start establishing that with all of our campgrounds so we can.
Last year was ten thousand dollars?
About ten thousand dollars, yeah.
So the estimated revenue off of a campsite like this would more than cover any, uh, staff costs to be able to go. To the site and perform maintenance and then any supplies needed to, to take care of it in the future.
Guess what I'm thinking is that we're making ten thousand a year off Wellington. I bet it's going to be more this year. Some of the other campgrounds, at least half of it should go into a long-term fund and maybe half it goes back towards personnel costs. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there.
And Commissioner, we're, we're right now just charging ten dollars a night too, which is way below the average. We've started looking at that and trying to. Make a decision what we need to recommend to you guys for next year.
You think we're ever going to have to start a reservation system?
Oh, Lord. Yeah, probably. I hope not, but yes.
Yeah.
We get calls. We get calls all the time. We, I got a call last year from Australia wanting to reserve campsite, so.
So bigger conversation, and we can have that after this. But Larry has a great idea on how to maybe set aside some ARPA funds and have a grant, a grant pool of funds. So that can be a different conversation, but I agree, we need to establish some kind of a fund that is starting to build for grant matches as we move forward.
All right, any other questions on this one? Okay, next on the list is a jail transport vehicle for the sheriff's office. And this one scored high because of obvious reasons. We have, you know, revenue that housing inmates here in Valley County brings in to fund our jail. We do currently have a jail transport vehicle, but it is not suitable for the conditions that we drive in year round. And it's, it's not quite exactly what the sheriff's office is looking for. So this vehicle would be a van, as is pictured here, and then it would have a box insert that would allow separation for male and female inmates. And then it would also be ADA accessible. So we would be able to transport inmates up here more efficiently and safer.
And I'm assuming the funding would come from the revenue from the jail itself.
The funding for this project actually comes from two different places. The van itself would be funded out of motor pool, and then the box that slides into the back, and then the installation of the box, which is around fifty thousand dollars for both of those, would be funded in the sheriff's budget that they're requesting this year.
Doesn't look like you can transport very many people at a time. You can transport nine in there? Really?
You have to have like a special driver's license or anything, Mike, to do that job? If you stay under nine, okay. The motor pool would buy the vehicle, the jail would buy the box, and we'd be ready to go.
Yep.
And that's a four-wheel drive, all-wheel drive, good?
That picture there's high roof, not actual after high roof or after short roof. Does that high roof, or might want to get into something that's electric?
Will it fit into ours?
Interesting.
That one will? The high roof one? High roof?
Yeah, the high roof still, it's more of the.
So that's not an issue whether it's a higher or low roof, as far as you're concerned?
Upper ice.
Okay. Oh, cool. We could throw in the back of the cattle truck then, couldn't we?
Get more inmates, you know.
Get more inmates, say it that way. They had requested this last year, and this got put on hold last year, so just waiting on this to second year request.
Yeah, they've been wanting this for a long time.
All right, any other questions? Okay, Boulder Creek Campground. This is similar to the Clear Creek proposition, except for the difference here is that we don't own the land. So a lease would need to be negotiated with Idaho Department of Lands. This is a ten-site campground, which would also include a vault toilet, picnic tables, fire rings, all of that, and then a day parking area for the trail system out there. This area sees a lot of use already, and the Recreation Advisory Council that's been created has put a lot of focus on this area. So developing a campground here would be good for the future planning in, in Valley County. Again, the cost to develop this campsite is well over two hundred thousand dollars, but because of grants, we would be able to do it at the cost to Valley County of sixty seven thousand five hundred. And that's being requested out of ARPA or PILT.
Larry, Dave, is there a trail system that takes off from this that we can use year round? Or is it just summer use?
There's a, right now, there's a lot of OHV use in that area. In the winter, obviously, there's snowmobile use going up there, and that's kind of a separate topic. But I think in the future, that'll be more important for all kinds of recreation up there.
You feel like there'd be a chance we could get a groomer up there someday and groom a trail?
Not necessarily a groomer, but.
Dave, do you want to come to the microphone?
I keep forgetting to do that.
Yeah, as I say, we're, we're constrained by what we can groom on public lands, especially with the USFF. So, um, you know, this area isn't really set up for a good grooming network or snowmobiling. It's more of an off-trail area where people are going to go boondock. But it's also a very small area, so you're getting people away from the end of the road at Boulder Road in Morrell would be, you know, a law enforcement issue and, and, you know, a good neighbor thing as well. But again, this is the campground portion, and so like what we're talking about is the red area is a parking staging area, so people could park. It wouldn't just be dispersed parking like they are now. And the, the green areas represent of where we're talking about for the campground footprint.
So Dave, on that turkey track, I remember you talking about last year, they had a nightmare for new snowmobile trailers up and down that road. Is that part of this kind of fix?
It is not in this fix. It would be in that red area if we could figure out a way to get up there to plow it. Colby Rampum's here as well, but there are two landowners that are current, currently plowing. Colby's one of them, or will be plowing this winter past this location. And so there's conversation starter there about, you know, could we share the cost? Could we help with that in some way so that we can provide like maybe a tent parking area in the winter? And then, you know, the road would be open. Right now, it's open up to where the private property ends. There's a little bridge going across Boulder Creek right there, but it's not wide enough to even pass two cars, much less a snowmobile trailer and a car or anything else. And there's nowhere to turn around, and there's nowhere to park, so.
Bit of an issue.
Again, this is more focusing on the summer stuff. You need to work with Jeff to figure out the kind of longer term solution, and then the two landowners for a winter solution.
All right, stay up there. Uh, the next one is the Little Lake Campground. And this project also scored high on the list. This is IDL land as well, so a lease would need to be negotiated. The difference between this one and Boulder Creek is they're proposing to have this as a hosted campsite, so there would actually be somebody who lived there during the months that the campground was open to help enforce the campground rules and whatnot. That's possible at this location because there's power and sewer and water, whereas up the Boulder Creek Road, that is not available. So this area in particular has been kind of an, an eyesore in the county recently because of people who camp there long-term and leave a bunch of trash. The potential opportunities at this site, I mean, it's a beautiful site, and it's got great trails that take off from there and good recreation opportunity. So this project, again, would cost well over two hundred thousand to develop, but the ask from the Recreation Department is about six, I think, sixty seven thousand, or sixty two thousand five hundred as cost to Valley County. So this would be requested out of ARPA or PILT.
If is the, is this IDPR's grant, this is, or is it an IDL grant?
All of our, all of our campground grants would be through IDPR. We'd be working with the lease for the land with IDL. And then, you know, the, the, I think probably the big thing to note too is that we have potential to get power at Boulder as well, so we would like to have a host at that site as well.
I was just going to say, what about a shared host in some way?
Sure, sure.
Until we could get somebody out of Boulder, but when they could at least go through and make sure people are paying their fees and, you know, some license plate numbers in case something gets trashed.
Sure. Yeah, we need somebody there to check on fire rings and, you know, there's going to be garbage pickup and things like that.
Dave, we're talking about all the green ones and the red ones. The blue one is already.
The green ones are the campsite, so the blue one is the, the boat ramp right now. That's under Fishing Games management. The red area that's right across from the first green area, that's a day use area that Fishing Game also manages. It's just a picnic table and a bench right there over the river. There's camping at that second red spot, and, you know, we were talking about that would be a good spot to turn into a picnic area. Get rid of the camping at that location and have it be, uh, day use only.
Is there going to be like? No facilities there, but dumpster or something, people can put their trash in? I mean, is there anything like that along there?
There's nothing like that now. I mean, if you look at any of the Forest Service campgrounds or Wellington campground now, it's pack it in, pack it out. So you have, you know, once you get there, you have, you know, basic amenities for a campground, a level place to park, tent site, picnic table, you know, campfire, ring, and then, you know, access to the bathrooms.
You don't want a dumpster out there because everybody in town will go use it instead of taking their stuff to the earth, so.
Yeah, I mean, you've got animal concerns, you've got all kinds of issues going on.
What I like about this one is, man, there's a huge opportunity to go both directions on Little Creek for all kinds of recreation.
I, you know, honestly, you know, I'd say this is probably like our biggest priority in our mind, and it's probably IDL's biggest priority as far as what they'd like to see change on their land. It's the biggest problem area that we have in probably for sure the north half of the valley, and I would, I would guess probably within the valley as a whole. So one other fat fun fact, I'm just going to throw at it, at you while you're thinking about this, is we have a hundred and eighty million, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of requests from PILT and ARPA, and our build out is over a million dollars, so you're getting a good return on our projects.
That's good politics.
All right, I'm going to hustle along since we're a little late on time. Okay, uh, the fourth request from the Recreation Department this year was the purchase of a new snow groomer. Cost to Valley County is fifteen thousand, but the new cost on this is three hundred thousand, I believe. So this would be another grant request through IDPR. This snow groomer is different than the ones we currently have in our fleet because it's a little bit smaller, and we would keep it at the Warm Lake area.
Is it just for trails, or what's it, what's it for?
Yep.
Say that again, Commissioner?
What, I mean, smaller, I mean, can you use it for the main trails, or what?
Yeah, you can. They're, they're, these small ones are real nice. Some of our trails are narrower, like twelve foot, and then when you get to our larger trails, we're at sixteen, twenty foot on some, or like Warren Wagon, a four-lane highway.
Oh, yeah.
But this, this one is small enough to where we could transport it on a, on a fifth wheel behind a pickup as opposed to we're transporting now with that, uh, single screw tractor, which is quite dangerous, a four hundred thousand dollar groomer. And when you talk about Boulder, this has, it's the opportunity of bringing this thing down that we could actually groom a little bit down at Boulder to clean it up once in a while, and Lost Lake Reservoir, which we do have permission to groom down there, but we've never been able to get to it.
And that cost, Larry, includes both the blade in the front and the groomer in the back and everything?
Yeah, we have the tiller and the blade, and, uh, it's, it's a different piece of equipment than it used to be. The last year they came out with it, and there's a couple of local people that are using them, and they're, they're amazing little pieces of little groomers.
Has a piston bully?
I, huh? Yes, it's a piston bully. Right now, we're transporting that four hundred thousand dollar, sixteen foot wide groomer over the top of Big Creek, and it just worries me every time we do it. Sometimes we can barely make it down that whole hill because the road's so narrow. Sorry, Jeff.
All right, any other questions? Next is a request from the Road and Bridge Department for a new motor grader. So Jeff just talked about getting his that we requested last year. This would be a five-year lease on this piece of equipment, so the cost to the county is eighty thousand per year, and this would come out of the Road and Bridge Department.
So eighty thousand to lease per year, purchase outright, swap?
They've interest rate right now on equipment, six and a half percent.
If we were to buy one of these outright, how much would it cost us?
Price on this is four hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
Four hundred forty-eight thousand. And what's the life of a piece of equipment like this?
Haven't had any of these cats long enough to see what your lifespan is. Every five years, we're not going to trade it in. Going to keep some in between, one of them seven, eight years. At the end of five years with caterpillar, we have a year and a half buyback. This machine here, made eighty thousand dollars a year on it for five years. Sixty-year payments a dollar. Trade it in on another lease, right then and there, it's two hundred and eighty thousand dollars paid. It's been reran, a brand new machine, five years, two hundred and eighty.
Just as a reminder, guys, whoever's answering needs to be at the microphone.
Again, I get it. It's just, it's just dollars, and it's, yeah. Just ask the question.
So Johanna, because this is road department funds, why do we have road department CIPs in with all these others? Can that be a separate?
We do CIPs for all of the different funds through this process, yep. When you look at it, at the summary, when we get to the end, you'll see that not many, if any, are funded by property tax requests. All right, any other questions? The next request is to replace the thermostats throughout the county buildings with Wi-Fi thermostats. This project would cost about sixty five thousand dollars. That's fifty thousand in the actual installation and, and product of the Wi-Fi thermostats, and then about fifteen thousand in network upgrades that would be needed to help run and control them throughout all of our buildings. There are some ancillary benefits to having those network upgrades. It would increase the public Wi-Fi and just increase some network usage here at the county. And then also, there is energy cost savings. So we're guestimating between seven to ten thousand dollars per year in energy savings. So this project would actually pay itself off in about nine years. And then there is a rebate from Idaho Power of fifteen thousand dollars after the installation of this. So the cost would, would pay for itself over the course of a few years.
Do you know how many we have to replace?
I don't know how many. Scott would know the answer to that question.
Come to the mic.
Yep, come to the mic.
We have thirty heat pumps in the court, three-story alone, and twenty-seven in the jail. So we're looking at controlling at least fifty-seven heat pumps, and we can hook into these here also that are doing the baseboards and stuff.
How do we ever take down this building? Can those be taken off and reused somewhere?
Yeah, surely they should be, yeah.
Yeah, and one of the other benefits is, is if we have an emergency or a situation where we lose heat or it's too hot or too cold, right now, someone from Buildings and Grounds has to physically come here, whether it's midnight or Saturday or whatever it is. And this would allow Scott to be able to control it from wherever he's at.
I could control it from my laptop, yeah. And also does diagnostics, tells us what's going on and stuff and everything, so, yeah, and everything else. And like I say, um, you know, it's an upgrade also that Jeremy has wanted to kind of do throughout the building, so it's, you know, kind of get two benefits from it.
Do they have to rewire the thermostats now to make this work?
You know, that's beyond my skill level, but.
They don't have to rewire anything?
Yeah.
Use the same, use the same wiring and it's just.
I don't think why.
Capable.
Since they're Wi-Fi operate, I don't think they require any, you know. Once the, the Wi-Fi capabilities are upgraded, then, you know, it's, um.
But the reason why the cost is so high is because you have so many.
Yeah, we have quite a few of them, and then, you know, the program for it, and then, you know, the, the program that is put on to our, our computer, our laptop. We actually can run it off our phones, um, you know. So if I'm in the Netherlands next year and there's a problem, Mitch can use his, you know, phone, you know. So it, uh, it's a, it's something, you know, the controls, like everything we've done, things that should have been started by ten years ago here and stuff. But it, it would be a big, you know, big help to us.
Ten years ago, it was right on the edge. Now it's standard.
This stuff is, you know, the controls, like we did in the mechanical room, been around for quite a while, but, um, yeah.
We appreciate you, Scott.
Okay.
All right, next, uh, this is a CIP that had been presented a few years ago, I believe, and approved. Through the process, at the beginning of our CIP committee, we first reviewed all of the outstanding CIP projects that had not been completed at this point, and we asked for those to be re-entered. So this is one of those. As you are all aware, the concrete outside this northeast entrance to the courthouse is corroded and, and uneven, and it is a hazard. So this is just that request again to correct the problem out there to cost to the county of thirty-five thousand dollars.
Good.
Okay, um, and then this is kind of the same, same type of thing, courthouse painting. This was requested a few years ago. It was approved at the time, hasn't been completed yet. So the, this is just in there again. I added some pictures. Hasn't been completed yet. Um, so the, this is just in there again. I added some pictures showing the damage to the paint around the courthouse. Um, this project has actually been scaled down a little bit. It would not be the entire interior of the courthouse. It would just be in, like, main public areas, entrances, hallways, commissioner room.
I don't see getting rid of this commissioner's bench in.
Uh, I, I did not receive a submission. Hopefully that doesn't cost over twenty-five thousand dollars. All right, next, um, we have a request for the new weed supervisor vehicle. Uh, Jeff covered this a little bit in his last presentation, but this would be a fifty thousand dollar request from the motor pool fund, um, for a three-quarter ton pickup. Uh, next is another motor pool request. This, uh, is for the planning and zoning code enforcement employee. This request was presented last year and it was, um, asked to be pushed off a year. So again, we're resubmitting it this year. That would be like a small SUV type of, type of vehicle. Next request is a mini excavator for the Road and Bridge Department. This also would be a five-year lease on the equipment. The, uh, annual payment is fifty thousand dollars. The mini excavator would be used for small projects, um, fixing county roads and culvert replacement and whatnot.
You don't have a mini now, Jeff? It's just wore out?
Yeah, it's a oh, I don't know what year it is. It's about ten years old. It's a Hitachi. Um, that's kind of a wrong picture of what we're getting. Sorry for not getting you the right one. Um, it's actually a nine-ton machine is what we're after, it's a three oh nine size.
Okay. Midsize.
A little bit bigger. We don't have any midsize. We've got a little tiny one like this and we got our three twenty. A lot of the times we need something that's only eight foot wide so we can haul it in and out of the back country easier, especially down to Elk Creek and trails in down in there. And it will have a brush head on it also. Both these excavators that I'm asking for will have the capability of running a, some kind of a brushing head on it.
And then rubber tracks, you can go on pavement?
Yes, this, the mini will have steel tracks with rubber plates on it. So we can run it on the pavement.
They're allowed to loan them to the commissioners?
Maybe you do, but not him.
Not him. He's hell yes.
Warren Wagon's needing some brushing.
I'm gonna use the brand new, some brand new blade today. You'll see me running up down the highway.
Probably sitting down there right now getting.
All right, next is another motor pool request. This is a new SUV for use by the extension office and, um, and 4-H office. Their current vehicle is aging and needs to be replaced. So, um, cost to the county is about forty thousand for that one.
Okay, so we have saved forty thousand dollars because of the sheriff's office. We're graciously gonna take the sheriff's Explorer and move it either into this or code enforcement. One of the two.
And it's a Ford Explorer?
Yes.
Is that because she's retired and you've taken her vehicle?
Yeah.
All right. So that's good. We can subtract one of those requests. Uh, the next is a, uh, excavator on wheels with a boom mower and Jeff can explain this, but this would be to help, um, get the brush on the side of roads like Warren Wagon Road and whatnot. Um, again, this would be a lease, cost to the county, sixty-four thousand dollars per year.
So this, it's what you see. It's gonna have a bucket. It will al-, also have a thumb on it. It'll save us from having to load it up and haul it. This, this will do, uh, twenty-six miles an hour, I believe. Uh, it's a lot different from the old wheeled excavators where you had to drive yourself there and then get out, climb up in the excavator, put your pads down. This here with the brush head on it, the operator can move down the road as he's doing this. This will have a longer reach and this will also aid in over replacements, ditch cleaning. I want something I can use pretty much year-round.
What will you do with the old one? It'll be surplus?
We're keeping the three twenty because once in a while we need a big excavator and it's baited off.
The old brusher, the Ford tractor and the.
Yeah, it's, it might just get a snow blower on it and stay with the snow blower on it. Because we still use it up on the hill once in a while to help with that big one up there, just to keep things opened up.
Okay, and the last request, uh, is a wood chipper, a larger wood chipper to be utilized by the Road Department. And I can't remember if this is a purchase cost or a lease.
That's, uh, that's a purchase.
The old one finally died?
No, the one we bought, well, we've got the old, old one, brush banded or something that we've tried to manipulate around to work on different things. And two years ago, three years ago, we bought a Echo brush. It looks like this, but it's, it works on four to six inch stuff, okay, but you shove an eight-inch one in there and it
Tokes down.
Yeah, it, a lot of upkeep on these. Th- this is the size of machine that the bigger companies are running.
What will that take for size?
Uh, I think that one right there is a ten inch.
Jeff, have you guys ever hauled that bigger stuff up to the Woody debris at the orphan that's let us.
Usually the bigger stuff we haul to the pit.
To the pit?
Employees will cut it up for firewood or like we did up with the pickleball area. They, somebody don't, volunteers went in there and cut it up and donated it to one of the Bible churches or something.
I was gonna say, I mean, we should be using it for Woody, whatever it's called. Gil in July, first July.
Yeah.
Windstock, thank you. I'm glad it was that big music thing.
A lot, a lot of stuff that we leave on the road this big around, we're there with chainsaws, we cut it into two-foot pieces and just leave it laying there. There's people that follow us around in their minivans and pick that stuff up.
Good idea.
It usually doesn't stay there very long.
So you can pull this with a three-quarter ton pickup?
Yeah.
And then you'll just spread it back out wherever you're chipping.
Yeah, we just kind of move the chute as we're working so we don't leave piles.
Questions? Okay, so I've just done three little summary slides here. So the funding sources for all of these projects, uh, total request is three million eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, the largest portion of this comes from the solid waste budget, which includes the, the Woody debris and the C and D grinding. Um, that funding source is, has already taken care of itself. So there's a large enough remaining cash balance there that we would be able to completely fund those projects. The only requests on this list that are funded by property taxes would be those requests from the motor pool. So that totals a hundred and ninety thousand. Um, the other requests come from ARPA, Pilt, or the Road and Bridge Department, which is not funded by property taxes.
Which is the Pilt?
So the Pilt requests were the courthouse improvements.
Okay.
And I believe we put the, uh, snow groomer request into Pilt as well.
So those thermostats are part of the Pilt also, this courthouse?
Um, and then I summarized, uh, with a graph here. So what I did was I took the solid waste projects out of here because that skewed the graph so much. You can see the different colors represent the different funding sources. So again, on the left, these are our highest scored projects and then you, as you move over to the right, those are the lower scored projects. Um, so ARPA projects, the dark blue there, you can see those ones scored very high on the list. And then, um, the ones that were funded by the Road Department, which have a funding source, but those tended to score a little bit lower. So, and you can see the jail transport vehicle is the only one that was funded by two different sources there. Okay, and last, I just, uh, listed everything with their cost in order, scored from highest to lowest. Um, if you have any questions throughout this process, throughout the budgeting process, feel free to reach out to myself. Clerk Miller can also answer a lot of questions or any members of the CIP committee. We, um, you know, as we move further along in the budget process, we'll know whether we can fund all of these projects or if we need to make some cuts. So we're happy to answer questions.
Well, I'm just really impressed with the work you guys did. This is awesome. This is like everybody's wants and desires all in one spot. And that's really what CIP, I think, was started for. And I just thank everybody for your help and your work on it because it's hard for us to do it up here. There's too much work to this job now, so thank you.
Yeah, the committee does a really good job of asking the questions so that when we get to this point to present to you, we, we have all the answers that you're looking for. So they work hard and I appreciate everybody giving it their full attention.
And I loved Johanna's presentation and all of your graphs.
Yes.
Awesome. Would you, um, update the process if you want to add a couple more meetings? And then bring it back for that updated process to be approved?
Yes, absolutely. Yep, I can do that.
Mr. Chairman, there is one member of the general public that would like to talk about one of the proposals.
Yep, come on up. State your name and the town you live in, please, for the record.
Yeah, so Colby Hampton, Lake Fork. And Johanna, if you don't mind, could you pull up the one for Boulder Lake? Perfect. Um, because that graphic, I can show, shows it pretty well. So I know you're running a little bit over. I know it's lunchtime, so I already, I timed myself. I'm at three minutes, so I'm, I'm not gonna rattle on forever. But with that, I'll be trying to be really concise with this, so. Um, there's a couple of things to, to point out. So where the green arrow of that campground, you know, is going, so our property where it's cleared, you know, where the, the trees are cleared a little bit, where it's thinned. So that's our land right there. We're getting ready to break ground in just a couple of weeks on our retreat venue. And so we're approved to have up to a hundred and twenty people, uh, during the day for those events. And we've actually got some, you know, uh, some stuff on that hillside already where we're planning on having, you know, so we'll have a hundred and twenty people on that. The separation between those two things is, it's one hill. And I think it's one thought that if, as I watch this, I'm like, we gotta be careful because if you've got motorized users, you know, like snowmobile, someone from Boise that doesn't know that it's not all just forest out here. And we gotta, you know, opposite on this hill, you got a hundred and twenty people over here. Gotta make sure that, um, that those uses don't mix. Those would be a bad, you know, bad mixing if you've got people just kind of milling around in the woods, not realizing, you know, that each other are there. So that's one thing that kind of stuck out to me, just looking at, you know, at our side of things. I think, um, another thing that kind of stands out to me is that when we, we went through our CUP process a couple of years ago, several of these things weren't on the table for us to be able to do. So, you know, when it came to RV, you know, I think there's gonna be some RV and, and trailer, uh, parking, from what I understand. When we went through our CUP process, several of those things were kind of off the table, you know, we had to reduce our number of campfires. And so we've got like one planned right now. And there's gonna be ten, you know, right there in our flank. It's, I kind of sat there, I'm just like, holy cow, I'm like, in some ways, it's hard not to feel like we're playing by a really different set of rules because we've got fifty-five acres on that side and that's, you know, one or two acres, you know, right there. So it's like, the difference in terms of what's being allowed. And we have to have onsite, you know, people for good portions of our events. And we're talking about, you know, having ten campsites right there and then just kind of nobody, you know, a little bit of checking in on it, but it's hard to make it pencil if you've got someone there full-time for ten campsites, right? And so, um, I think that was, uh, one of the things that stick, that stuck out to me. Now, I understand they're not exactly the same types of, of venues, so to speak, right? But they're both amenities. They're both going to draw people in, you know, to a certain extent. So if you put in RV parking right there, you're gonna have RVs coming up the road or more of them. And if you put trailer parking up there, you're gonna have potentially more trailers, you know, coming up the road. And so I kind of look at that, I'm like, we're kind of doing the same thing. And so I know you can't answer the question right now, but if I was to go through and try and amend our CUP, are we gonna be granted the same types of abilities or are we kind of working to disadvantage? You know, for what is in some ways kind of a little bit competing with us, you know, right there on our flank. So uh, the last thing was, as I got thinking about all this, I just had the thought, I'm like, could we actually build the campsite? Because we're so close and with all the land that's out there, that's, it's sitting, you know, right next to us. And you can have a hundred and twenty people daytime, but nighttime we're approved for forty. So you've got a net difference of eighty people. And if you've got a group up coming up from Boise and they're saying, saying, hey, well, you know, we're booking, we're doing a wedding and it's gonna be, we're planning a year in advance. If you're talking about doing reservations for this, we're gonna fill that campground up, ten, ten sites just by ourselves, you know, for half the summer. With the people that we're bringing up, they're gonna say, hey, I'd love to stay close to my group. Wow, I can just walk over the hill and be there right on site. And I'm like, heck, ten campsites is not gonna be enough. You're gonna need to have probably like thirty. And the way that, um, that the traffic or that the, 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 the use is increasing fast enough on Boulder Lake Road, the shaws look like they're developing their land right there as well. And I'm like, there's a lot happening right there. And I'm like, ten campsites, our own people, our own clients are probably gonna fill that up and then some for a good portion of the summer, would be my guess. So, um, I think, yeah, the, the other thing is that, I, I think the main, the main thing that kind of comes to my mind, it's like we're having to jump through a lot more hoops for, for our thing. There's a lot more people in a lot more dense area put right there. And I'm sitting there, I'm like, it would have a lot of value to us to be able, like, if, if you want a campground there, I'm like, heck, let's do enough for both uses so that we can have some of our people go over right there. We'd build it, we'd make sure there's enough space for, for the other uses that are happening there. But then we've got a little bit more control to make sure we don't have motorized use going up there on the hill. Like, design the campground in such a way that you make sure that you block access for a snowmobile to accidentally just go, you know, up that side. I worry about county funding, you know, it's like, it gets put there, but Valley County is not like flush with tons of cash, you know, it's like, we're always prioritizing. I'm like, once it's there, then I kind of worry about how that looks long-term. So I sit there, I'm like, could we build it? Would the county be okay with it? You know, with, with some sort of type of approach like that, because then we can keep our eighty people on site, reduce some of the traffic going up and down that road for people that are already allowed, you know, with our CUP to come up there. So, anyway, I have a lot more thoughts on it, but I've got three minutes and I gave you your promise, so I'm done. Thank you.
I think there's something that you would have worked with Larry on or done.
I think you guys need to have a conversation, but I think the difference is private use versus public use. So we are trying to develop public campgrounds that people can come up to. But I think anytime we can create partnerships, it's a win-win for the county and the landlord. And, you know, I understand you're talking about you're being more restricted, but again, it's private use and but at the same time, we're in the same area. So we need to be good neighbors and good partners. So I think you guys just need to get together and come up with a plan and come back and send them.
I could see this whole thing getting a lot bigger really fast. And we're gonna be, need both public and private.
Be good for the area, though.
Yeah.
Hey, anything else, Johanna? Thank you, Colby, for your input. I think it's something that's certainly in the back of my mind.
Yep. Awesome.
If not?
I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Um, we're gonna break for lunch and.
I actually have a service award to do, so I don't know that we're gonna get lunch.
You have somebody here now, Mike?
Uh, it's, we had over.
Can we do her after lunch? Yeah, let's shoot for that after lunch. We just have board shop and we can work it in then. I think we still have time to get something to eat.
Thanks, Johanna.